I'll now hand you over to Abby to announce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you Chair.
I will now ask each member to introduce themselves, starting with myself. I'm Mike Chaplin. I'm a councillor for Southey Ward and as one of the joint chairs of this committee, I'm in the chair today.
Councillor Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Echelfield.
Councillor Nicky Bellfield, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Councillor Janet Riddler, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Councillor Mark Whittaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don as well.
Niki Bishara, councillor for Netheredge and Sherrill Ward.
Tony Downing, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Good afternoon all. Councillor Gallois of the Royal for Shire Green and Pratyside Ward.
Marion Elliott, councillor for Gledes Valley.
Brian Homshaw, councillor for Brumhill and Sherravale.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
Yeah, I'm Richard Williams and I represent the Stannington Ward.
I believe we have some apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair. We've received apologies from councillor Henry Notte and councillor Brian Homshaw is substituting. And we've also had apologies from councillor Denise Chapman.
Thank you for that. I think we'll allow officers to introduce themselves as and when they get to speak. Yeah. Oh, before we go too far, are there any exclusions of the public and press today?
Not today, thank you Chair.
So, moving on to declarations of interest. I'm going to ask if any members have got any declarations of interest on any of these items today. I will start by declaring that Jane Newman is known to me. That's a personal interest. I also sit on the Peak District National Park Authority, so Jane has worked there in a professional capacity and continues to do so as acting as an agent. Are there any other declarations? Okay. So, item five, minutes of the previous meeting. That was the one held on the 17th of September. So I'm asking members to approve as a correct record the minutes of that meeting. People happy with them or do they want to go through them page by page? Thank you very much. Next item is site visits. The date of the next site visit should be in members' diaries. It will be Monday the 11th of November at 10 o'clock and you can expect planning committee to be on Tuesday the 12th of November. So we'll take the first application today. It's item 7A, planning application number 24/01800/ and it's the rear of 110 Bradway Road Sheffield S17 for QW. It should be on page 19 of your agenda. So I'm going to ask Chris to present the report.
Thank you Chair. I'm Chris Healy. I'm a team manager in development management for the south part of the city. So this is an application for an extension to a detached rear outbuilding from one dwelling with associated access parking arrangements and demolition of the detached garage and carport which exist on the site to facilitate that. You can see hopefully from these slides as we go along that this is the T-shaped side, the wider part of the T at the back is a portion of land which is to the rear of 108 to 112 Bradway Road. It's currently used as garden and houses and ancillary outbuilding to number 110, which is in the main leg upright bit of the T. The application is for, as I say, a single storey extension to extend the outbuilding. You can see it a little more clearly there. So in the top left-hand corner of the T is the existing building. So it's an application to extend that outbuilding and for the building to, rather than be used as an ancillary building to number 110, to then be a separate dwelling. Parking and turning area will be provided in the top portion of the site and also that would displace parking and turning for, or some of the parking and turning for number 110 to its front garden. There are also some minor but useful improvements to the access arrangements at the entrance to the site and exit, which is by the same point on Bradway Road. There is, members will see in the report, reference to a previous refusal, which was for two dwellings. That's on page 24 in the report. And that is a material consideration, though it's important to note that's for two or twice as many dwellings as what we have now. Brief summary of the reasons for refusal there were around overdevelopment, the layout of the two houses being out of character in that backland position, though you can note from that image that there are a number of buildings located at the rear of these plots. Intensification of use of the access, loss of trees and poor living conditions for future occupants. We've got significant representations, as you can see in the report, from page 25 onwards, including petitions for and against the development. It's in a housing area in unitary development plan. So what's been proposed is a preferred use as per policy H10. It's sustainably located in an established residential area. You'll be aware that we have a lack of a four-year supply of housing, which is, and so therefore the contribution of one additional house is a small but positive contribution towards that. It's situated adjacent to the green belt, which is a consideration because of that. So it's the land there, the light green, lighter green land to the north, the recreation ground and the driving range facility is within the green belt. But as you'll see, all the development, so that is to the north of the site, all the development of such physical built form is taking place to the south and will have no visual impact on the green belt, no real visual link between them. The impact of the physical work, you know, the physical works of the extension, we feel, on the character of the area is minimal. It's effectively a single-storey extension to an existing building and the building itself largely exists. Therefore, the kind of overdevelopment and character reasons that were in the previous refusal, we feel no longer apply. It provides, I'll just click through a few slides as I'm talking, or before I go on to the next bit, because you begin to appreciate it a little more. That's the house as viewed from Bradway Road and a view including its neighbours. This is a view looking towards the west from the access to the site and that's in the opposite direction towards the east. And it's at that point where vegetation will be cut back, a low stone wall provided to improve visibility. That is where the access to the, you can just see underneath the carport, a car beyond it and a garage building, which is where number 110 currently, how they access their rear parking and garage area. And that is where the access point to the dwelling would be. This is the outbuilding as it stands at the moment. So it's a substantial building and an extension would take place roughly in the location of the trampoline on that image. That is a view of the rear of the building. So you can see there's a small retaining wall and then a banked garden area up towards the north boundary with a green belt. That image there shows you the extent of garden area that is on the opposite side of the top of the plot. And that is the extent of the extension, the lighter grey image towards the bottom of the plan drawing. So it's an extension that is roughly two-thirds the size of the existing building. And there is the layout as proposed with the outbuilding now extended. So we don't, we feel that there's no significant impact on the character of the area and that that accommodation will provide a good standard of living for occupiers. The garden, for example, is 350 square metres, which significantly exceeds our guidelines, which are minimum guidelines, but it significantly exceeds them and is in character with the kind of garden spaces you get in the locality. There's no significant physical impact on neighbours. And the greater potential for impact on neighbours, as identified in the previous refusal, comes from the twining and throwing up and down the access road, particularly between numbers 110 and for its current or future occupiers and number 112. The conclusion we've come to on that is that the access is currently used to serve the rear garage and parking area of number 110 and therefore a degree of disturbance already occurs to number 112. And as that is being removed, and if you like, replaced with the new dwelling, the level of activity in that section of the site is no greater than what it is at the moment. So we don't feel that that remains anymore a reason to resist the development. So that's another area of the previous refusal that we feel has been removed. The access is very narrow, as you can see on the slide there. There is no way of improving that access. It measures 2.8, just about 2.9 metres wide. So it does operate. You can see there that vehicles are in the site. It does function. Obviously, two vehicles can't pass, but there's sufficient space for passing and awareness, particularly on a site with so few users. We're using that on a regular basis. So we don't feel that that presents a highway safety issue. And the access itself, as I said, has been improved at the frontage and we now get two by 45 metre sightlines, which are what's required on that location. The only matter therefore remaining on the access is whether the increased use by one dwelling would amount to intensification that was harmful to highway safety. And we don't feel that an additional six to eight movements, which is typical of one dwelling in a day, would justify or present a robust reason to resist that. So again, that's one of the other reasons, reason for refusal first time round, we don't think applies anymore. The access is too narrow for a fire appliance and we have considered that in conjunction with building control, who have the final say on such matters. When things come to the building regulations stage, they have to liaise with the fire authority. And whilst the fire authority have raised some concerns about current proposals, beyond really the remit of planning necessarily, building control have advised us that there is an acceptable solution achievable. And we feel that's as far as we need to go with that. And I'll move quickly, I know we've got a big agenda. The site has been subject to a biodiversity impact assessment and a preliminary ecology appraisal. There are no particular species on the site, no bats identified in the garage, although a precautionary measure has been suggested, recommended for when it comes to demolition and what have you, which is recommended in conditions on the agenda papers. A 10% net gain is required but can't be achieved on site. So the applicant will have to follow a habitat bank proposal, or sorry, will have to submit a biodiversity game plan as required through the statutory biodiversity condition, which doesn't appear on your agenda. It's embedded in all our decisions. It's a statutory condition that is imposed by regulations. So we don't repeat it on all the recommendations to you. But that would require them to submit a plan which would be approved by us and then they have to implement it and it's monitored through other regimes. So we're satisfied that that's dealt with. Notwithstanding that, they are proposing enhancements which include bird boxes, hedge planting and hedgehog passages within the site. So there are some smaller scale enhancements within the site too. Again, and at this point is also different to the previous refusal, there are no trees affected by this scheme. They're all retained. The works in the garden area here would involve some hard standing in the kind of the centre of that photograph really. But that would be carried out with a no dig construction and with tree protection measures so that there won't be any harmful impact on trees. So overall therefore, it's a much smaller scheme than the previous refusal. The proposals, we feel, adequately address all the previous reasons for refusal and taking account of the tilted balance and the small positive contribution the development brings and the absence of any significant adverse impacts, we're recommending approval Chair.
Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. We have three speakers today on this application. Two of them are speaking against it and one speaking for. I'm going to take the speakers against the application first and I'm going to ask Christopher Farah to come to the microphone. If you press the button on the right down, that will enable your voice to be heard and you have up to five minutes to put your case.
Okay, thank you. Dear Planning Committee, councillors and Chair, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. I'm here to object to the proposals in person. I'm a resident at 112 Bradway Road and I'm representing all of the boundary neighbours and the wider community. I'm a built environment professional and I'm a technical director of estates at a major NHS acute trust. I'm an experienced practitioner in fire safety and a responsible person for fire safety within my hospital trust, which is important in this objection because the objection contains fire safety legality implications. Objecting residents have also commissioned professional advice from planning consultants to support our objection and will be speaking too. For clarity, the residents are 114 Bradway Road, ourselves 112, 108 Bradway Road, 106 Bradway Road, 104 and our neighbours across the road, directly across the road from the entrance at 57 Bradway Road. For clarity, the councillors for Doran Totley Ward are also objecting, not as stated in the planning officers' report, but all three councillors are objecting. That's councillor Martin Smith, councillor Rebecca Atkinson and councillor Joe Otten. All the surrounding neighbours are absolutely dismayed at the LPA's insistence to approve this application despite the very detailed objections and technical documents being produced which clearly evidence that the proposals do not comply with Sheffield and national planning policy frameworks and statutory fire safety legislation. Previous applications for this conversion of this outbuilding and standalone accommodation have all been refused. The grounds for refusal are similar to those that already exist, predominantly due to very bad safety access, out of character with the local area and a desire to preserve natural gardens of the area. Excuse me. The planning history of this site has been misrepresented by the LPA. As all previous refusals have stated that the building was not to be used for independent living accommodation, this fact has not been, has been omitted from the current LPA report. There has been five previous applications on this site from 1997 to 2001 involving this outbuilding. And the latest, larger application in 2023 was rejected. This development is a backland garden and would create a very small cramped bungalow unlike anything in the area, which would be completely out of character and grain. Bradway Road has generous gardens necessary to provide peaceful respite for residents facing the noisy Bradway Road. This development removes the privacy and intensifies the use of the garden space as a bungalow. The national planning policy framework specifically seeks to protect these gardens against such inappropriate development, clause of 71 and 124 if you would. This development is proposed by greedy garden grabbing developers who fully understand the high value of housing of the land of the area approved will open the floodgates to a larger application on the site and the surrounding areas, destroying local communities with parasitical back garden developments. The developers have no concern for the ecology of the site. Trees are going to face pressure of removal over time. A large car park is built directly underneath the tree, over the tree roots and the area of the car park has got a greater area than that permitted in the British standards. This is an actual fact that's been omitted. The neighbours also wish to be, it's been noted that the LPA has extended decision deadlines on this scheme on numerous occasions and delayed sharing documents on the planning portal. Planning submission documents have been poor, misleading from the outset. Neighbours and residents also feel very upset and angry that we have been treated like second-class citizens in this respect. A poor application has been submitted initially, followed by a series of highly dubious, biased supporting documents, all of which have been proven to contain flaws and misleading information. South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Services consultation has been misrepresented to the planning committee, to the point where councillors will be potentially approve a scheme that cannot ever comply with fire safety law. There is no possibility of emergency fire vehicle access within the site. Given the level of local neighbourhood objections, unanimous local council objections and failure to comply with policies, standards and the law, the neighbours of Bradway are politely requesting that the planning committee to unanimously refuse this application. We urge you not to simply be a rubber stamping body. More serious concerns around the substandard access. The applicant's design is based on a single driveway solution dating back to the 1970s. This does not comply with planning policy CS75, minimum dimensions for a shared driveway. The current driveway entrance is 3.5 by 5 metres. That required would be 4.8 by 10 metres, almost double the size. If the correct dimensions and the design for a shared private driveway were to be used, pedestrian visibility splats, as been mentioned by the planning officer, could not be accommodated within the boundaries of the site and the entire garden of 110 would be lost, clearly not a safe access or compliant with the national planning policy framework or planning standards. The LPA brush over this standard as not relevant on the basis that it is only one extra dwelling. But how can it be acceptable to use a small, narrow driveway of a 1970s house as a shared driveway for dwellings? Cars and vehicles have got much bigger since the 1970s, haven't they? Previous applications have been rejected on this basis.
Mr Farah, you have gone over your time quite a bit, but I think you've made your points there. Thank you. Do you want to respond after the speakers or, yeah, okay. I'm going to ask Susan Crowley to come to the microphone please.
Thank you Chair.
And you have five minutes.
Thank you Chair. I'm Susan Crowley. I'm the planning consultant referred to by the third party representative who's just made their case to you. Just to take on from Chris, as members will be aware, the application does concern a site that has previously been presented to the local authority and for development, which has been refused. As members will also be aware, case law has established the principle of consistency in decision-making to ensure public confidence in the operation of the planning system. Put simply, this means the previous decision, as Chris has said, is material to the matter that is currently before you. I'm here to represent the views of a number of third parties who are not only concerned that the previous decision is not being weighed in the balance, but that the case officer has simply failed to have proper regard to the circumstances of the case. In summary, the case officer fails to weigh in the balance previous judgments around the effect of the development on the surrounding area and the amenities of existing residents and future occupants. The officer also fails to consider the effect of the development on trees out with the site and as regards the contribution it makes to the percentage delivery of housing on greenfield sites in the city. With reference, the impact on the surrounding area, and this is important to note, the officer accepts that backland development is proposed, but determines that contrary to the previous decision, there would arise no harm to the character of the surrounding area simply because the outbuilding exists. To note, the core building existed at the time the previous application was refused. We think the case officer has misunderstood. Whilst outbuildings and annexes existing gardens and landlocked locations throughout this area, these are not self-contained uses and they do not constitute tandem development. This development will give rise to two distinct dwellings, one of which has no established street frontage nor follows a consistent building line. The effect of this on the character of the surrounding area, defined by officers as having established street frontages and following a consistent building line, was previously found to be harmful. For consistency in decision-making, this harm must still be weighed in the balance. It has not. Turning to the matter of the living conditions of future residents, previously officers determined that none of the proposed elevations achieved the recommended 10 metre separation distance to neighbouring boundaries. As a result, and this is a direct quote, officers found the developer would have a significant adverse impact on the amenity of future occupants. The 10 metre rule is a material consideration and the previous findings of harm in this regard must still be weighed in the balance. They have not. As regards the quality of the amenity space, the development previously refused was served by an adequate amount of amenity space. However, the local authority objected to the quality of the space citing the overshadowing effect of trees and the fact that the space would be heavily overlooked from the north and south. The quality of the amenity space has not been examined using the previous approach taken and so the harm previously identified, which undoubtedly still exists, has not been weighed in the balance. On the matter of the effect of the development on adjoining residents, the area of amenity space most likely to be used by future residents of the scheme is that which is located directly adjacent to the boundary with the neighbour at 112. The proposed kitchen, dining, living area opens onto this space along one entire wall of full height, open glazing, meaning that noise and disturbance, including light disturbance, associated with the use of the main living accommodation will be keenly felt by the residents within 112. In this matter, the case officer has failed to have regard to the circumstances of the case. On the matter of the proposed access arrangements, previously the local authority objected to the width and proximity of the access to the principal and side elevations and rear gardens of flanking properties. It determined that access arrangements would result in an unacceptable level of noise and disturbance and loss of privacy and thus harm for flanking occupants. This matter has not been weighed in the balance and thus the case officer has not given proper regard to the circumstances of the case. And finally, if I may, on the matter of developing greenfield sites in the city, according to our assessment and analysis of the percentage of completions on greenfield sites in terms of dwellings since 2018, the 12% threshold listed in your core strategy policy CS24 has been breached in every single year by an amount of between 15 to 18%. So it cannot be said that this dwelling, built on a greenfield site, as this garden must be defined, will be compliant with core strategy policy CS24. I would suggest... I would suggest, members, that if you grant planning permission for this development on the basis of the case that's been put to you, without having proper regard to the circumstances of the case, you will be making an inconsistent decision, which by definition will be unlawful.
Susan, I'm going to stop you there.
Which will be unlawful and will be subject to judicial review. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, I thought you were bringing it to an end a little bit earlier, but you managed to get some more words in. Jane, would you like to come to the microphone? And you're speaking for the application.
I'm Jane Newman, and I'm a chartered town planner and the planning agent acting for the residents of 110 Bradway Road who've made the planning application before you. The proposal is to separate a bungalow which exists in the garden of number 110 Bradway Road, so that it can be used as a standalone house. As the report sets out, the bungalow is currently in incidental use to the house. This means it's used for games, children's birthday parties, and occasional overnight stays by friends and family. And it's only used by the occupants of 110 Bradway Road and their friends and family. Every application must be judged on its own merits, and this is clearly a much smaller proposal in size and in impact than anything that went before it, and should be judged on its face. The bungalow proposed to be extended and will deliver three bedrooms and open-plan living accommodation. The height of the bungalow will not increase, and the windows face into the bungalow's own garden away from neighbouring property. The proposal includes the demolition of the garage to provide vehicle access to the bungalow. Parking for the existing house will be provided off-road, behind the boundary and at the front. The vehicle access as it passes the neighbouring house will only serve the bungalow, and thus there's no intensification of its use, as it will continue to serve a single dwelling. Both properties will provide it with good-sized gardens, and no one's amenity will be compromised by overlooking or overshadowing. Throughout the course of the application, we've provided several reports produced by experts in their field in relation to biodiversity, trees, highway safety and fire safety. The loss of an area of grass to provide parking and the 10% gain required will be provided by off-site gains in relation to biodiversity. We would have provided gains on-site, but this isn't possible because the land will be in residential use, although we are offering some things like some bird boxes and some hedge planting. There is no loss of trees proposed. The tree report sets out that with appropriate materials used for the parking, a low-impact mesh system, and some routine tree management, there will be no harm to trees on the site. Fire safety can be secured, the use of dry risers is viable and is proposed. As the report sets out, final details are a matter for building regulations. Safe access to the highway can be secured with minor changes to the drive where it meets the pavement to secure appropriate visibility of pedestrians and the highway. This has been set out on the plans. The site is close to the Greenbelt, as are other houses in the area. The Greenbelt is not visible from the site, and there would be no impact on openness. While we appreciate that change can be difficult for neighbours, the application demonstrates that there will be no harm to amenity, and that any impacts of the development can be satisfactorily controlled with the use of planning conditions. The proposal is in accordance with national and local policies, and represents a good opportunity to create a much-needed dwelling for the benefit of Sheffield's residents in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Chris, do you want to respond to some of the points made?
Briefly, Chair, yes. So there was reference to previous approvals having a kind of a non-separation requirement on those consents. In other words, that the outbuilding in its previous forms shouldn't be divorced from any of the dwellings it was related to at that time. And that's correct, but as has just been mentioned, we have to deal with each case on its merits. Those conditions were imposed for the reasons they were at that time, but any new application falls to be considered on its own merits as a new kind of chapter. So there is nothing kind of incorrect in taking a different decision for whatever reason further down the line. I'll ask Mark to come back in at the end of this, if he doesn't mind, on the issues around adequacy of the access. And there was also reference to the large car park, and that it was too large, larger than British standards. I don't know what British standards has been referred to there, but in planning terms, the consideration really is, is it big enough to function? And in this particular case, in other words, are the car parking spaces big enough for it to function without causing a problem else on the highway network? And in this case, is the amount of space being taken up by it likely to cause harm to the trees? And the conclusion we've arisen out there on both is that they are both perfectly acceptable. There is a, this isn't the clearest of plans at this scale, but the blue areas are areas that are completely unaffected, and the green area is that which is in the vicinity of the tree and where the node construction will be necessary. And I think you can see from that image there that towards the right-hand side of the, where the new dwelling is proposed, and in between the tree and the group of trees is the area of parking. It's not a large car park as such. It has enough space for three vehicles and a small turning area. With reference to the trees in the surrounding area, we don't feel there is any impact on the trees in the surrounding area. All trees cast shadows across land and will at some point be under pressure for routine maintenance, and on occasion, as this committee is very aware, request for removal. But we don't feel that this development of itself brings forward that risk in any significant form. The trees around the site are a reasonable distance from the property itself. They allow on the remaining portion of the garden, as I think the photographs demonstrate, and those that were able to visit the site will have been aware of, they identify areas where, you know, there is reasonable sunlight, areas of shade, which can often be a useful thing in a garden. Whereas the previous scheme with the additional dwelling made that much more difficult to achieve and compromise its ability to provide reasonable living conditions, hence our reason to reject the last proposals. And there were lots of references to not having considered those previous concerns that were set out, and I would disagree with that. I feel that we have considered those and explained them where appropriate within the report. The open glazing was mentioned as a concern towards number 112, but... So the open glazing would have been a reference to either the section, I'm going to get on my chair, Chair, if you don't mind, because it's frustrating not being able to point it out. I didn't know that, Chair. So the open glazing would have been another reference to this bank of glass here, which is here, or these windows. And here is a very significant boundary treatment. And whilst there is a courtyard patio identified here, if that is a main area of the garden that's used, obviously there's a large area to the other side as well, then we feel with the inadequate boundary treatment, which already exists, and if ever removed at some point in the future could quite reasonably be replaced, we don't think that represents a privacy concern, Chair. And then on the reference to greenfield completions, we've not been provided with any details of what's been suggested there as a, what was referred to as a kind of an annual, effectively an annual breach of, I missed the figure, I think it was in the order of 15 to 20% every single year. But at the bottom of page 29, we set out our assessment of that, which comes from our most recent published documents, which report that from 2004 to 2005, 93.8% of new homes were built on previously developed land, and therefore 6.2 were on greenfield sites, which is well below the 12% that is set out in policy CS24. So that's all I wanted to say on that, Chair, but if Mark wouldn't mind commenting on the adequacy of the access, please.
Right, Chair, yeah. In terms of the access, the visibility displays accord with standards on the front there, and there are vehicle pedestrian inter-visibility displays as well, so that's an improvement on what's there currently. As we mentioned, the vegetation would be pruned back, so from a visibility display and vehicle pedestrian inter-visibility display, we're happy with what's shown on the plans. The mention's been made of fire access and emergency access, and the width of the drive between the two houses, 112 and 110, and clearly the width that we've got there, a fire tender wouldn't be able to get all the way to the back there. But I'd argue that the shared nature of the drive really just extends to the front building line of 110. The shared drive there is in the order of just over four metres wide, and then it's only when it gets to between 112 and 110 that it goes down to 2.9, which essentially is servicing a single dwelling. And there are plenty of examples of 2.9, three-metre drives servicing a single dwelling. And single dwellings can sometimes have up to, depending on the number of bedrooms, five car parking spaces. This would have three car parking spaces with space to turn. And the current parking arrangements for 110, as it says in the report, are actually between the two houses there. So there are vehicles passing between the two houses currently associated with the sole use of 110. Any vehicle passing between those two houses in the future would be solely servicing the new dwelling, with the parking for 110 in the front garden area, where the drive is in excess of approximately four metres. So the view I would take is that the access is sufficient. And in the report, it also mentions the 45-metre rule for houses to be within range of a fire tender in an emergency. In an emergency, I would guess a fire tender possibly would turn into that drive, it's four metres wide. Fire tenders can work in gaps of 3.6 metres where fire crew work alongside a parked fire tender, and 3.6, 3.7 metres is deemed sufficient for that. So possibly in an emergency, a fire tender might drive up to the footprint of 110, in which case it would be within that 45 metres of the proposed new dwelling. So I think that's the view that would be taken if it went to an appeal or whatever.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to open it to members' questions, and I've got councillor Tony Downing.
Thank you, Chair. I have two or three questions on this plan, on this application. It was stated that the outbuilding was not to be used as a dwelling, and according to what's happening here now, that is overturning that, whatever it was decision. There were several mention of tree loss, but in the report, it does not reflect this. But Yorkshire Water Consultation, on page 27, Yorkshire Water Consultation refers that development will require new drainage systems, but Tree Survey does not accept this. I wonder if you could just expand on those questions for me, please. Oh, sorry, also, I am concerned, although Mark has just mentioned about the width of the driveway, it does narrow at some point, I'm sure you mentioned it narrows at some point, and that's where the difficulty would be with a fire tender, in my view. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tony. Chris, do you want to go first?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. So, yeah, I think I attempted to answer the first point in response to the speakers in saying that, yes, there will have been times in the past where, I mean, there's a planning history on this site, it goes back some years, and there will have been times in the past when the building was originally constructed, or when it, because what happened? It was constructed and then it changed hands, if you like, from one, from, I believe, number 112 to number 110. And at those times, various applications were made. So 2001, I think, the most recent ones. And at that time, conditions were imposed preventing its use as a separate dwelling. Now, I can't turn the clock, I can explain exactly why that was at that time, but that was, it could have been for a number of reasons. We get quite a lot of applications for outbuildings in gardens of properties across the city. And at that time, all we're assessing is their ability to operate as an outbuilding, if you like, and what impacts that has on the area, on immediate neighbours and what have you. And so when we're approving those, we often, not routinely, but we often attach conditions preventing its future separation. And that is as much as anything to define the permission and establish that all we're considering is an outbuilding in someone's garden, not the fact that it might be used as a separate dwelling and might have different interactions with that garden space and the original house. So that could be the reason that it's been imposed, or it could have been imposed, you know, 20 odd years ago on the basis that that was perceived to be problematic for whatever reason. What we have to do now is deal with the application that's before us, and for the reasons that we've set out, we don't feel at this moment in time with the application that's presented to us, access arrangements and everything else, that it's an unacceptable thing, therefore we're recommending approval for that. Tree loss, there is no tree loss as part of the scheme. It's a minor trimming back of hedge in the bottom corner, but in general, there is no tree loss. And in terms of drainage not being considered as part of the tree survey, then the scheme itself involves very little. It's, in many ways, it's not much more than a house extension in terms of water runoff and what have you. And in terms of functionality, we're satisfied that there's no need for drainage works to, and the building regs matter rather than the planning matter with something like this really, to impact on the trees that are in the area. The main tree is located at the back of the site, save for one larger tree, which is, you can see to the right hand of that image, and it wasn't envisaged that it was likely that any drainage works that proved to be necessary would impact on that tree, which is why that's not been pursued any further. Chair, you said, would I like to go first? I can't remember if there was anyone else to contribute to that.
I thought, Mark... There was a question about the fire engine having the reach to the building at the rear, which would go to Mark.
I don't think there's too much I can add, really. There's, the report mentions that building control have been consulted, and they feel that there are solutions. There are standards set out for pumping distances from fire tenders to dwellings, and 45 metres is the rule, and that's mentioned in the report as well. And as I say, a fire tender clearly can't access between the two houses, the drive isn't wide enough, but it could, I would imagine, in an emergency, get to the front building line of the existing dwelling, number 110, which would put the proposal within 45 metres of a fire tender.
So, thank you, Mark, I think that really does clarify that point. I'm going to move now to Nikki. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I've got three questions, please. One of the objections talks about the hedgerow to the boundary with number 112 is going to be removed and replaced with a fence. I wasn't sure from memory, having been on the site visit, which wall that was, which side, rather. I wasn't sure from memory, having been on the site visit, which wall that was, which side, rather. Is there space to put up a fence if permission isn't given for removal of that hedge row? And then, secondly, I can, given that currently the building has occasional use and it would move to being residential use, the one bit that really, I took note of in particular was light nuisance at the bottom of the garden. I can see how that is different, but is that something we can consider in terms of planning? You know, having a house with the lights on in the middle of the night or in the evening, I can see that is very different to having an outbuilding that's occasionally used. But is that something we can consider? And then, thirdly, one of the objectors talked about setting a dangerous precedent, opening the floodgates in the local area to allowing homes to be built in gardens. Would that only be the case, well, would it only be allowed if other people already had an existing outbuilding and could put in a similar driveway access? What guidance is there around setting a precedent if, given what you've said, we're meant to be judging each case on what's in front of us? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of the precedent argument, if I go, well, the simple answer to that, and perhaps not a very helpful answer, is each case is determined on its own merits. So it would depend on what the form of that application was at the time. And also on other outside factors such as housing land supply and issues such as that. But I've put this slide up just because that demonstrates that in some areas of the city, you get a very strong pattern and character of development where you have houses in a particular, such as these are, set back maybe 15 metres or so, a bit more than that, from the highway. So there's a spacious front garden, good-sized rear garden, dwellings above each other, and there are no buildings in between, and there's a very strong character of rear garden space. And then you get areas that are less like that. And I think if you look at this image, this demonstrates that as well as the buildings along the frontage, there are a significant number of buildings in the wider area that begin to form and contribute to that, to that character. This has the added factor of an existing building on site, which also contributes to that character on this particular site. And that's why in particular we feel that the addition of what is effectively an extension to that rather than a new dwelling being built, you know, in a two-storey form or whatever, is quite different and can be supported. So would it set a precedent? No, not necessarily, because as I say, in a sense, there's no such thing as precedent because each is determined on its merits. But the character would have to be considered at that time. Light nuisance, yes, that's a reasonable consideration that a resident's experience of their space might include a sort of darkness beyond. And then all of a sudden, there's a change in that in that there is there is regular light where there wasn't, and that kind of perception of the being other people close by and present. And again, on the images, it's probably worth noting that at this level here, roughly in line, very roughly in line with the top of the, the height of the hedge and the trampoline would be, you can just about make out, I'll stay mature, I think, this time, on the bottom part of that image, there are above the floor plan of the living space. And you can also see on the elevations, the two right-hand images, roof lights within the extension. So there is a possibility that they would cast some light that would be noticeable to the occupants. It's to other occupants nearby, should I say. I mean, it's worth mentioning, it can be used as an outbuilding and is frequently, as we understand it, used for such purposes, which could also be after dark and would have a kind of a similar level. But yes, if you found, if you felt that light nuisance itself was harmful, then in any given situation, that can be a consideration. I think my view on that is that the light that would emerge from the building would not necessarily be much greater than what it does at the moment, apart from perhaps the introduction of the roof lights. But I wouldn't consider that myself to be a strong enough reason to resist the case. And then on the final but first point about the hedge row to the boundary, the proposal is to retain that. And that is there, which forms a considerable barrier. But any fence erected could, yes, could be erected without harm on the hedge side of the, between the hedge and the extension. Because as you can see there, there is a reasonable amount of space to achieve that.
Thank you, Chris. Brian, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I've actually got three questions, I'll try and be quick. Is there any potential, following on from what we've just said about hedge rows, is there any potential for increasing the amount of hedge row? They are more attractive than large fences, but also for biodiversity reasons, increasing biodiversity net gain, for example? So that's one question. Secondly, the dry riser, I just want to clarify whether the dry riser will be put in place to help with any fire that may occur in that building? Or, or and it's within 45 metres of the building? So which of those methods would the fire service use, given that unfortunate situation? And then finally, also to do with that access, I think one of the speakers said that the width of access was not national planning policy compatible. So my response to that would be to separate out the parking areas. Is that feasible? So there's some highways questions in there, but also on hedge rows.
Chair, yes, there is scope for planting additional hedge features, and that is part of the proposal. So that is part of the applicant's contribution to biodiversity enhancements on site. In terms of the dry risers and the position, et cetera, then I think it's important to remind ourselves that we can't determine the detail of the fire proposals on site. That comes from the building regulation stage. What we've done as officers is liaise with the fire authority and with building control to understand whether there is an acceptable, achievable, workable solution. We're advised through that process that there is, and that the detail of that will be resolved through the building control stage. So in terms of level of detail, as officers, we're neither required to nor have we taken that any further. I didn't quite fully understand the highways question. The parking areas are separated, if I misunderstood it, apologise, but the parking areas are separated in that on this plan, the parking for the new dwelling is all in what is currently the back garden of number 110, which are immediately to the right of the building that's been added to and converted to a dwelling. And the parking for number 110 is, as currently occurs as well, in the front garden of number 110.
I wanted that clarified, actually, because it was unclear from what had been said, whether that was the case or not, and that cars would pass over. From my visit to the site, I couldn't see that happening, not if people stuck to where they normally park their cars. But at the moment, all the cars are at 110. Nigga, you have a question?
I think part of it's answered. It was just some clarification regarding the concerns raised around loss of privacy and overlooking. It's mentioned that, obviously, you've mentioned about the hedge, existing dense hedging and proposed fencing is being put in place to actually mitigate that. But just some clarification in one point, it says no increase in height on page 31. And then on page 32, it mentions height not considered excessive. So just some clarification, if there's any difference in height. Because obviously, just working with a few families in terms of the privacy, the importance of them people, once a building is built, the impact that it has on neighbouring individuals and families, I've seen that. And you don't want to be facing something where they can not enjoy their front gardens or even, you know, due to the privacy side of stuff.
Thank you, Chair. So the, just to give you some kind of idea of context, et cetera, first of all, just quickly run through the images so that you can see the existing boundary treatments, which aren't proposed to be removed, and the substantial, the significant, that's not particularly helpful because it's in the wrong direction. But that is currently the boundary between number 112 and number 110, the outbuilding. And again, high hedge down the side, that's the front of the property, so perhaps less relevant to the question. So that's the boundary between 112 and 110. Then the boundaries on the right-hand side are also significant. They appear smaller there, that's because of distance, but they're, and they are slightly lower, but not such that it would cause a privacy issue. And in terms of distances, the report, I think, refers to distance from the back of number 112 to, I'm going to walk again, back of number 112 to the proposed dwelling of 16 metres, which is a good level of separation when there is existing boundary treatment along here in particular. There's a similar distance occurs here. In terms of fencing, new fencing, I think was mentioned, fencing is proposed along here such that the occupants of number 110 don't essentially have vehicles driving up and down through their garden. So there is a boundary treatment proposed here, and all other boundary treatments are of reasonable height. Our policies seek to avoid a situation where this distance from a two-storey property to another boundary is less than 10 metres from an overlooking perspective. And these are in the order of 16. So in terms of the privacy here, we're satisfied that that's more than adequate. And because of the low-rise nature of this, it being only a single storey, there's no privacy impacts in this direction.
Thank you, Chris. Janet, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. It seems to me as though, and there is a question with this, to contextualise my question, that some of the key concerns that I can pull out of this arise from the nature of the change of use, from it being an outbuilding, which is primarily for the use of the people who already live at 110, to being an independent property with its own inhabitants, separate from that. And the consequent issues that arise from this in terms, I think primarily from the the access passage along the side of the house to get to the property at the back. At the moment, I can see that if it's the same ownership, then they obviously have control over what goes in and out of there. But looking at the safety issues, I'm thinking, well, if there's somebody else living in that property and the residents of 110 have parked their cars on the front, then what happens then about emergency access? Because obviously, we're talking about two different properties, two different owners who are, you know, independent from each other. So if somebody's parked on the drive of number 110 and an issue arrives at the new property, how would somebody then access that? If the people who already live at 110 or already parked there are blocking that access? I can see that it's a relatively small extension, but I think the issues in terms of emergency services, fire, ambulances, et cetera, are sort of larger than the size of the property itself. It sort of assumes that access will always be available, and I wouldn't see how that could be guaranteed. And if that is acceptable in terms of planning law, then at least can concerns about, say, fire safety be addressed through making sure that these are mitigated through sprinklers being installed, for example, in the new property so that there is some form of fire tackling the fire there? So it's really that the change of use, access, and the fact of the lack of control, if it becomes a second property rather than an outbuilding of the first, because it is, as I understand it, the intention seems to be for it to be an independent property with its own owners and, you know, its own sovereignty, if you like, in terms of that. Does that make sense?
That's a fair summary. Chris, do you want to respond to Janet's questions?
Yes, Chair, thank you. So the layout, as proposed, allows for, or seeks to prevent a situation where access to the new dwelling isn't possible. So the parking for number 110 would take place, they would share the drive, but then there is a parking area for number 110 off to the right-hand side as you enter the plot. So people parked at number 110 would not prevent access to the rear for emergency services vehicles that might be able to get that far. And we've already mentioned that a fire vehicle won't be able to get beyond number 110. But as I said in answer to one of the previous questions, Chair, we've explored whether that is achievable and we're satisfied, sorry, that appropriate fire access to the site, fire service access to the site is achievable and we're reassured that it is. And one of the factors that they did consider in coming to that conclusion was the ability to use things such as sprinkler systems, dry risers. Mark's already referred to the fact they can get so far into the site, et cetera. A combination of all those things and just determining the appropriate one when it comes to building regulation stage is the way forward.
Thank you for that, Chris. Oh, another question. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Chair, just a quick question, if I may. Can we clarify the status of the driveway? Because is it jointly owned by the two individual premises? Or and up to what point does it become singularly owned by the new separate dwelling? That might have some implications I'd wish to comment on later on.
Chair, I can't answer that because it's, at the moment, it's all entirely owned by 110. And an assumption, presumption is that if this were to take place, access arrangements or whatever would have to be resolved through private law matters.
Chair, thank you. Just to note that land ownership isn't.
You want to introduce yourself?
Sorry, I'm Victoria Clayton, I'm from Legal. And just to remind members that land ownership isn't typically something that we deal with in terms of planning. So whether it's owned by one party or the other isn't, you know, wouldn't ordinarily relate to anything to do with planning. So, you know, if you've got any questions about what it is that you're concerned about, obviously, I'd try and deal with those. Thank you.
It's just related to some comments I wish to make later on.
It's just related to some comments I wish to make later on.
You have another question? I was really hoping to move to comments, but... Okay, Nikki.
Half question, half comment. It's going back to the light. So could you see, if you're... I can't remember, is it one-one-twelve, the one where it's at the bottom of? So if you're on their top floor, you'd be able to see the light coming out from the roof windows. And I'm thinking if you're in the garden, even though the bushes are quite thick, there's still light there. And I get what you said before, this is a comment bit, I suppose, about it's already used, but it's not used as a residential property. So basically, you are putting a box of light at the bottom of their garden that could be on all the time, which seems quite different to something that we've been told is for occasional use. And also, what's the impact of that light then on the really nice trees at the back that we said about, and doesn't that go onto greenbelt as well? So has any consideration been made of the impact of light onto wildlife there as well?
Chair, in terms of the impact on wildlife, that hasn't been considered in any detail unless, and I can't say whether it has at the moment, it was assessed in the preliminary ecological work. The light is, however, predominantly towards the non-greenbelt side of the site. I can't say categorically, because I haven't checked the sightline, as to whether there would be a direct line of sight of the roof lights from the upper floors of number one-twelve, potentially. And yes, potentially any upward light as opposed to direct views of the light source would be possible from the upper floor, I would imagine, yes, after hours of darkness.
Sorry, going to have to go into that a little bit more. My understanding is that the extension is at right angles, and therefore the roof lights would be at right angles to the building that's being extended.
That's correct.
Therefore, any light would be going away from, it wouldn't be going towards the neighbouring houses. No. Yes, but it's not going towards one-one-two or one-ten. And nor is it going into the greenbelt.
Well, it does change your experience of your garden, which was the... It does change your experience of your garden, doesn't it? If you've got a constant box of light at the bottom of your garden with light coming out at angles. I don't know how much we should consider that, but I can see that it's very different having that there during winter months like this, every evening, when you've had a dark garden, maybe lots of wildlife, that's occasionally had some light when they've had a party or a guest.
Yeah, I think my comment, Chair, would be that, in answer to the question, the light that's been referred to, it wouldn't be, for want of a better expression, throwing light directly at number one-twelve. But yes, the light that would go up into the sky after hours of darkness would be visible, I would imagine.
I think that answers your question then.
That is your question about the angle of the light. Does that... Is that... I know there are certain bits of guidance and law that are about whether it affects a view of something. I would say it affects your view of your garden and of what's there, or your enjoyment of your garden, part of which is that natural dark area.
Chair, I think you might be talking about, you know, are you considering whether there'd be an amenity issue? Is that what you would like the planning officer to address? Whether, you know, they think there'd be an amenity issue caused by the light? Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Chair, it can be, it can be. But we feel that the height of the building, a single story, any effect of that is quite limited. Yes, it will be noticeable, as are lots of developments that occur in and around people. And the question is, is it harmful? And we don't feel that that is a factor that makes this scheme unacceptable.
Vicky?
Sorry, Chair, I just don't think it's been mentioned as part of the members' questions, that obviously the tilt and balance is in play there. I'm happy to read that out if anybody would benefit from that. But essentially, it is whether the impact would be, you know, significantly and demonstrably... Yeah, just pull it up and I can read it to you. And yeah, so in terms of where we've got the tilt and balance, there's an assumption that we'd be granting permission unless any adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies and the framework taken as a whole. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Victoria. I'm going to move to members' comments, and I think, Richard, you wanted to make some comments.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a couple of things, really. I mean, to me, there's no doubt, and councillor Ridler hit the nail on the head, there is an intensification of use of the backland when it'll change from an occasional usage, they call it outbuilding, to a residential property, and with all the characteristics that comes with it. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the size of the garden that will be left on one-ten. I know we're talking, it's about, I think, according to the report, it's one-hundred-and-twenty-five square metres, but compared to the other backgardens along that body of houses, that's considerably smaller. So it's out of keeping, so that's a concern for me. Coming to the hedge and councillor Bellfield's comments on light. When we saw it yesterday, there's a huge hedge bordering both one-one-four garden, the top end of their garden, and one-one-two, which was the top of their garden. Now, myself and my colleague had to dig round that hedge. And to actually build the building that is proposed, the extension, a significant amount of that hedge is going to have to be cut down or thinned out dramatically, and it's going to be dramatic, otherwise you can't build that extension. Now, can we, if we're minded to progress with this, can we put some, can you protect a hedge? Because I think that's fundamental to the amenity of the neighbours. Can you condition, and the other point, sorry to jump around, I believe that nobody actually knows whose hedge it is. There seemed, or there seemed to be certainly yesterday, I raised the question, and it wasn't the definitive note belongs to that property or that property. But I think if possible, if we can establish whose hedge it is, it could be for a condition on that the hedge must remain as an absolute minimum. And I think that's probably just about it. Thank you.
Can we put a condition on the hedge, that it be protected?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate your point now about ownership. Obviously, in terms of conditions, you can only put a condition on that the applicant's got control over. So obviously, if it isn't the applicant's hedge, then, you know, that would be an issue. I don't know whether the planning officer has got any knowledge of the hedge in relation to the redline boundary.
Chair, I think a good portion of the hedge is not within the applicant's ownership.
So take it they would have to leave it alone? Which is not in their ownership? Cliff, you have some comments?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm always very nervous about these, what they call garden-grabbing developments. But my only, well, two comments, really. First of all, is that there is very substantial hedging around the property, higher than what I've seen in a lot of places. And it's quite dense, it's quite high, and it's, we're looking at a single-story building here. So it does strike me that it is very well-screened, this property. And I'd be surprised if there was significant problems with light from what I saw. Yeah, so I... And even when extended, I, you know, I... It's going to be a bit tight up against the hedge, I think, you know, as my colleague has pointed out, it is going to be a bit of a problem. But from the point of view of how that light from the new building is going to affect neighbours, I would have thought it would be quite slight myself.
Thank you, Cliff. Are there any more questions or comments? Sorry, no more questions. Are there any more comments before we go to a vote? Okay, I'm going to ask members to take a view on this. I'm going to start with councillor Woodcock.
For the office of recommendation, Chair.
Against the recommendation, Chair.
Against the recommendation.
Against the recommendation.
Against, Chair.
For, Chair. For, Chair.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation, Chair. For the recommendation, Chair. Against the recommendation, Chair. Okay, we're just totting up the votes. That is carried.
Sorry, Chair, can I just clarify what the vote was there, please?
Six votes for and five votes against.
So, Chair, are you voting? Because obviously, if you were to vote, you would make it even, and then you'd have a casting vote.
Sorry, it's six votes for. Oh, sorry.
So I just want to clarify whether you have voted, Chair, and if so, you have the potential to equal the vote and then cast. That's all. Obviously, you have other options to abstain. Thank you, Chair.
No, I'm happy to go with the majority of members on this one. I do believe it is finely balanced. And it did pose some difficult questions, but I'm also mindful that the tilted balance is in play. And until we get our local plan properly installed, it will, it does make it difficult for us to refuse applications where there is, there are elements of doubt about them. Thank you. So that's passed. So we're going to have a five-minute comfort break. People can be back at half past three, please. Application number twenty-three stroke O two eight nine two stroke O U T, and that's land at the rear of two... Oh, we have, yes, what do we ping? I am sorry, I didn't realise that not all of our members were present to reconvene. So if you can just bear with for another minute, please. Okay, I'll give it till twenty-five, too. There might be extenuating circumstances, so... We're going to be compassionate here.
Can you text it?
We're going to reconvene the meeting and take up with item seven B, and that's planning application number twenty-three stroke zero two eight nine two stroke O out. And that's land at the rear of two-four-one Burncross Road, Sheffield S thirty-five one R Z, and that's on page forty-one of the agenda. I'm going to ask Andrew to present this application.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Andrew Burton, I'm one of the team leaders in the Development Management Service, and I'm the team leader for the North Area Team. So this particular planning application site is number two-hundred-and-forty-one Burncross Road, which is located in the Burncross area of Chapel Town. It consists of a bungalow and a large area of vacant land, which is located to the rear of the dwelling. The area is predominantly residential in character. You've got existing dwellings that neighbour the site on Burncross Road, Burns Drive and Byron Avenue. Some of those are in building backland locations behind the main dwellings, which are on Burncross Road street frontage. There are a range of other uses neighbouring the site, however, which include Burncross, doctor's surgery, a fairly large local supermarket, allotments, and a cemetery. So this photo shows existing bungalow, which is number two-hundred-and-forty-one Burncross Road, and the land to the side of the property, which will be utilised to access the land to the rear. The existing bungalow would be retained with the detached garage, shown in this photograph, due to be demolished in order to facilitate the access to the rear of the site. This photo shows the main body of the application site. It's a considerable-sized area of land, that's about naught-point-eight hectares in total. The land essentially comprises of an extended private garden, but does benefit from its own separate access from Burncross Road. The land to the rear of the property is predominantly covered with grassland and other vegetation, including scrub and some trees. This photo is taken from within the main body of the site, looking north towards Burncross Road. The scrubbed grassland, which occupies large parts of the site, is visible, and two of the existing bungalows, which neighbour the site, that occupy a backland location that is set behind properties on the Burncross Road site frontage. The application is in outline form and proposes a development of up to fourteen dwellings that will be located to the rear of the existing property. All matters are being reserved, apart from means of access would be achieved via... All matters are being reserved, apart from means of access would be achieved via a single road constructed from Burncross Road. The indicative site layout plan shows a fairly linear form of development from north to south that will be served off a new cul-de-sac state road. The house types are shown to include a mixture of five bungalows, four semi-detached houses and five detached houses. However, the final details would need to be established through a future reserve matters application. This plan shows the proposed new access arrangement for the development, which is the only detailed consideration that is sought to be fully fixed through this outline application. The proposal shows a fairly standard T-junction arrangement, which would replace the two existing smaller accesses, which are positioned on the site frontage. The design has been carried out to the relevant standards and is acceptable to highways. That's in regard to its width, junction visibility displays and footpath width. This is a further site photo that shows the existing site frontage. Details to note on this photo are the two existing accesses, which will amalgamate to become one. You can also see an existing bus stop and bus stop markings, which may need to be repositioned as part of the development. This is reflected in condition 14 of the recommendation. The report explains that 34 objections have been received from local residents. Some of the main concerns include loss of trees and ecological habitat, harm to the character and appearance of the area, harm to the amenity of neighbouring properties, concerns about highway safety and upon the impacts on local services. The committee report sets out the assessment and the proposal carried out by offices. It explains that the site is a mixture of housing area and open space in the UDP. However, the site consists of private land that is essentially an area of extended garden, is not accessible to the public and does not have a formal recreation use. In addition, the council is currently unable to demonstrate a deliverable four-year housing land supply, meaning that the tilted balance set on the MPPF is engaged, as we've heard about already at this meeting when discussing the previous application. Substantial weight needs to be afforded, therefore, to the benefits of the delivery of new homes. And with 14, that would make a significant contribution. The site is in a suitable location for new housing development being set while within urban fabric of the area and being a form of infill. In addition, it is regarded to be a very sustainable location, being on a main road and near to shops and services and very close to Chapel Town centre. This benefits the notice to include the loss of vegetation and habitat from the site, but the ecological surveys have identified the habitat to be mostly of low strategic importance and of the replaceable nature. Herbiculturally, the majority of trees that would be affected are low-value category trees. That said, national policies set a requirement for net gain of biodiversity, and given that the development would see most of the existing habitat lost from the site, it's been determined that a commuted sum is required to achieve towards 10% net gain in biodiversity. But that's been discussed with the applicant, and what's been agreed is a section 106 agreement heads of terms for a commuted sum of £132,500, which would be invested by the city council's ecology team on other projects in the city. Concerns about the impact on the amenity of neighbouring residents is acknowledged. However, the indicative plans are showing that the development would comply with separation distances required by our guidelines. Furthermore, the plans include five bungalows in the locations nearest to existing dwellings in order to limit the impact of the development, which is also, again, reflected in the conditions. Overall, it is considered the tilted balance weighs in favour of granting this outline application. The recommendation is one of approval, therefore, subject to the conditions in the report and the proposed section 106 agreement. I'll just talk very briefly about the supplementary reports. So that includes amendments to the wording of two of the conditions, that's numbers 11 and 14. So number 11 is the landscape and ecological management plan. So we're proposing to include some additional wording within that to make it explicit that bird and bat boxes would be required and swift breaks. In relation to condition 14, which is the one about the bush shelter and the markings having to be positioned, having to be adjusted, that incorrectly refers to SYPT, which is no longer. So that wording is proposed to change to SIMCA, who have taken on that responsibility. There's a small report correction where unfortunately it says tile balance rather than tilted, which is amended, and then in the recommendation part, it's saying that we need to achieve towards 10% net gain of biodiversity, given that it's a formula approach that's worked out of commuted sum, and it is an absolute guarantee that it will be 10% whitefly replacement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We have two speakers on this application, one speaking for and one speaking against. So I'm going to call Julie Lund to come to the microphone to speak against this application.
Thanks, Chair. As neighbours, we've all come together as we are extremely concerned that the planning portal has not got all the consultation comments uploaded, especially the highways DC comments to the proposed outline development. As we have serious concerns regarding the proposed access road for the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, car drivers, we'd ask that all the reports are made available for review prior to decision being made to ensure full consultation is adhered to. Our main concerns on the highways are that the proposed access junction does not comply with the Highways Act 1980, section 184, where a driveway cannot be located within a 10-metre distance from a junction road, proposed new access, which is the proposed new access road, or a 15-metre distance required if the road is classed as a major road, where I would say at times, especially when the motorway is closed, it is a major road. Sheffield City Council has adopted these regulations as outlined in their domestic vehicle crossing application, which shows drawings of these required applications of a 10-metre distance. The proposed site layout uploaded, so I don't know if you could pass on to the next slide?
Yeah, do you want to look at the access or is it the aerial photo?
The next one after this one.
This one, yeah, okay.
The site layout upload on the portal clearly shows that the proposed right-hand side of the Bellmouth Junction is directly next to 239A Burncross driveway. So the line there at the side where the red is 239A driveway, therefore not observing the 10-metre requirement under the 1980 Highways Act, section 184. It also does not observe the 10-metre minimum distance from the access road for 239 Burncross Road driveway next to it as well. So I do not understand how this can be put forward for recommendation. We're also extremely concerned that the preliminary ecological appraisal by Weedles has not been uploaded onto the portal, which was produced in January 2024. Therefore, we assume that the survey was undertaken when protected species, for example bats, hedgehogs, dormice, badgers, owls are dormant. Therefore, the Weedles appraisal, which states that for one, that the potential of bats is negligible, should not be taken into account when making a decision to approve this proposal. As we believe that there are bats roosting in the two derelict outbuildings, not the trees. If the proposal had been undertaken in the wintertime, you can actually assess that it's in the trees, but not in derelict buildings. If the outline proposal is approved, as recommended in the planning officer's report, these buildings would be demolished prior to the full ecological survey being undertaken. We therefore request that an emergent survey needs to be completed prior to the outline approval at the specified time scales of May to September for such a report and decision to be meaningful. We are also extremely concerned that the 34 neighbours' objections have not been fully taken into account and how the new development will affect our immunity, welfare and mental health. The site will affect hundreds of people as the site backs on to a care home, allotments, houses if the proposed development is approved. On this basis, we consider that the outline application should be refused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lund, and for keeping to time. Really appreciated. Can I ask Ian Corner to come to the microphone, who's speaking in favour of the proposal?
Good afternoon, Mr Chairman, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you today. Firstly, may I express my appreciation to your planning officers and their colleagues for the professionalism in which this application has been handled? As you are aware, this site forms part of a private curtilage of 241 Burncross Road with no authorised public access, thus rendering it unsuitable for public recreation or sport. It is a relatively small site and comes in approximately 0.8 hectares, and our application seeks to reserve all matters except access for future consideration. And as it says in the report, the access has been accepted by your highways team. As you may recall from your visit, the site is bordered on three sides by existing residential areas and on the fourth by allotment gardens. The location is highly sustainable, situated on a main bus route and a half-mile walk from Chapel Town Street station, with junction 35 of the M1 about a mile and a half away. Local shops and services are also in close proximity to the site. Paragraph 131 of the MPPF stipulates that good design is a fundamental element of sustainable development. Our site design respects both local vernacular and urban grain and maintains a respectful relationship with surrounding dwellings. We have outlined a new road and landscape buffer along the eastern boundary to protect adjacent properties on Burns Drive and have proposed a bungalow on the northern boundary to respect the bungalows constructed in the rear gardens of 237 and 239 Burncross Road. At the southernmost end of the site, which is also the highest point, we propose the deployment of bungalows to further safeguard existing dwellings and mitigate community impact. We exceed all required separation distances outlined in your policies and the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide. This design strategy ensures the site, while partially visible from neighbouring properties, is not significantly discernible from Burncross Road or other public areas. We acknowledge that the site offers limited ecological value, consisting mainly of grass, scrub and several inferior category C trees, along with a limited number of category B trees. There are no category A trees within the site. We have submitted the necessary ecology reports and biodiversity net gain analysis to ensure a full consideration of the site's ecological aspects. The BNG analysis indicates an approximate loss of five units in ecological terms, and my client has agreed with office to provide a financial contribution to offset this loss. The section 106 agreement is currently being prepared by Sheffield City Council and my client's legal team. As you know, Sheffield City Council currently faces a shortfall in its housing land supply. Sheffield uniquely assesses its land supply on a four-year basis rather than five, yet still falls short of this reduced figure. Your officers have confirmed that the council currently possesses only a three-year land supply. This site can help address this shortfall. The access, as stated before, has been agreed by your highways team, and a lot of thought and consideration went into this access. The layout before you is indicative and is reserved for future consideration. We believe this development does not undermine the policies and aims of Sheffield City Council, nor the MPPF, and this is further confirmed in your planning officer's report. Therefore, I kindly request that you follow your officers' recommendations and approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Corner. So, Andrew, do you want to respond to any of your comments, particularly the objectors?
Yes, I think there's a number of points. Some of them ecology-related, some were highways-related, and some were just the query about consultation responses not being on the website. In terms of, just before I go across to Mark to ask him about his input on the highways queries. In relation to bats and protected species, there now has been an ecological assessment undertaken of the site. Now, that determined that the bat roost potential of any buildings or habitat of the site to be negligible. We have consulted with the council's ecologist as well, and they're content with the findings of the report, which has been undertaken by qualified ecologists. The proposal does include bat boxes as a form of enhancement. So whilst it's essentially determined that there's no bat roosts present on the site at the moment, then with the provision of bat boxes, hopefully there will be some bats that roost on the site in the future. It does have potential to be bat foraging habitat and for commuting bats. So that can inform things like the future lighting strategy for the site. But we do have to understand that it's an outline application at the moment, and the detail is reserved regards to the final layout and the design of the houses. So that would seem a suitable approach in the view of us as planners and in the view of our ecology officer as well. As well as in terms of directly mitigating some of the ecological impacts of the development and the loss of habitat. We have got a situation here where the biodiversity net gain report has been produced that's measured, quantified the existing habitat and set a baseline. And this development is committed to achieving somewhere near 10% net gain above the existing baseline. And that will be given to us by way of a commuted sum, so that will be put towards delivering ecological enhancements elsewhere. In terms of the point about consultation comments not being on the website, I mean, we consult within the council to different specialist offices and services. Then that advice comes back to us directly for the benefit and use of our service. We then have regard to those comments in our decision-making and the assessment processes. That's all set out in the report and explained the position of each of the consultees, respects each individual topic. So on the highways topic, it explains that our officers have been consulted on the plans, that they've given us advice, that in their view, the proposals are compliant with the relevant standards. I will open it up to Mark in a minute, but it's a similar story for ecology as well. So on that note, Mark, please, could I just hand it over to you to just comment on the access proposal, please?
Yes, Chair. There is a site location plan or a layout plan which shows the access, which would be adopted, an adopted junction in relation to the other junctions in the locality. Unfortunately, it's not quite on that plan. It's slightly off. But there are similar priority junctions of a similar scale, north and south, or east and west of this site location. The radii of that priority junction, like all the other priority junctions in that locality, are in the order of six metres with a five-and-a-half metre carriageway and segregated footway. footway, except that ideally it would be nice to have more separation between this access, which would serve 14 dwellings, and the neighbouring private driveway which serves a single dwelling. We took a round of view, really, and the property that forms the application site does have two accesses at the moment, which would be amalgamated into one access. And there are examples of what most 10 metres is a good standard to have for private drive from an adopted road, but there are lots of examples of where the distance is less than that. And if you look at the, there was a drawing of the actual junction itself, I think where vehicles are joining the highway from the adopted road and where vehicles would be joining the highway from the private drive isn't 10 metres, except that the radii, the ingress is, radii there is very close to the private drive, but vehicles are leaving the highway there. Where vehicles are actually joining the highway, there's somewhere in the order of eight metres separation. And we just took the view that 14 dwellings off of a cul-de-sac, proximity to a private drive serving one dwelling, but particularly as the sightlines from the adopted road, if this is approved, all accord to standards, that there wouldn't be an adverse safety impact, and that's the view we reached.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to open that up to questions, and I've got Mary-Anne wanting to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions on the ecology. So it was mentioned that the ecological survey isn't on the planning portal. Is there a reason for that?
Andrew?
Yeah, sorry about that. I'll just confirm, because yeah, one of the things, it may still be my first year at Sheffield, I'm not fully certain of the protocols to, you know, why certain documents may not be published. I'm led to believe it is to do with if there might be sort of sensitive material within a particular document, especially when it comes to certain types of protected species such as badgers, and they can become identified in their location through that. So yes, I mean, we've obviously got the benefit of all that information as officers, and ultimately it is, as the local planning authority and with the help of our consultees, as in the experts, the ecology officers, that that report is aimed for, so it's for us to undertake the assessment of its findings and determine whether it's adequate and fit for purpose or not. In the view of the ecology officer that has been involved with assessing this application in conjunction with ourselves, it is an adequate report. However, there is still a recommendation on condition 11, which has got the landscape and ecological management plan. That details the range of other requirements and need for some additional survey work, which I mentioned in relation to foraging and commuting bats, which, you know, that's one of the recommendations, the initial ecology report, that there needs to be a further survey undertaken to understand those impacts, because, you know, that'll probably just have an impact on the lighting strategy for when we get to the detailed design stage. But at the moment, it's just outlining, it's only an indicative site layout plan which we're considering at the moment.
Thank you, yeah, I understand all that. I understand that it's outlined and your recommendations. I just wondered on that particular point why it wasn't on the portal, but thanks for explaining. I wonder if in future maybe it'd be useful if the committee could see it, even if it wasn't available to the public, because I suspect the ecology is going to be the big thing that's coming up really amongst all members on this one, so it just might be useful to have that information. So I was going to ask, because, you know, it's clear that this site is of medium ecological value, so that is really, really significant for us to consider, because it's not low, it is medium. So no net loss is the best outcome in terms of ecological quality, and it's accepted that there probably will be a loss. So obviously, I welcome the limp and the amended condition 11, but I'm a little bit unclear about the commuted sum, so can I just ask you about that? Is that okay? So we've got a commuted sum delivered via section 106 for the off-site habitat provision, so that's detailed on page 69. And I just think it's important for us to understand this, because we're being essentially asked to make a decision, and we need the information, because, you know, we're going to be asked about probably making the site worse in terms of ecological value, so we need to know what, you know, what the mitigations are and how that will work. So it's more of a procedural question, really, like, if that 10% commitment isn't achieved for whatever reason, obviously bearing in mind this is further down the line, subject to actual planning, you know, permission, and it's probably more of an enforcement issue. I mean, I know Chris mentioned before it would happen under other regimes, but I just wondered, is there any mechanism for the planning committee to get an update if it's not achieved, obviously further down the line, with any possibility for the committee to, you know, decide whether to put, you know, a provision that the developer has to deliver more units to achieve the 10% that they're committed to? Because obviously, this is all, you know, relatively new, so I just wondered if it'd be useful if we understood that procedure?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a few points there. I mean, this application actually predates the mandatory regime, which is in place now.
I was going to be my other question, so does the procedure differ with this being under the MPPF as opposed to under the Environment Act where it's statutory?
It does, yeah, because the MPPF just specifies the aim for it to achieve a net gain, rather than specifically 10% bad overseas to net gain, that's something else. It's just come in more recently, earlier on this year, but this particular application, I think, was submitted at the back end of 2023. I mean, just going back to as well what you said about, some of the habitats have been assessed to be of medium value, but it does also say that that habitat is of low strategic importance and that none of it is irreplaceable. So I don't think it's quite as strong in terms of saying that, you know, that the habitats on there are particularly special. It's not designated site in terms of it being a local wildlife site, there's no tree preservation orders on the site either, neither do I think that would be realistic, seeing as so much of the site is hidden away from the public and is not, you know, not really seen from any public vantage points. So I think we do recognise the fact that actually this is something that, you know, we had to work through with the applicant and negotiate with them in terms of this proposal for that, what's quite a significant commuted sum amount. And I'm pleased to say that they've not resisted that too much. It's based on a formula approach, which is something which the ecologists have come up with together from each of the different South Yorkshire authorities, and so that's , I think, 25,000 pounds per unit, and that's how we've arrived at this particular figure in question. But it is a different approach, it's like turning the clock back a little bit to the approach that we're starting to put in place on an interim basis prior to the mandatory 10% BNG coming in as part of the national legislation.
Thanks, I understand that. I guess my question was just more about the comeback for the, under the two different schemes, under the MPPF and then under BNG, statutory. You know, would it ever come back to planning committee if those responsibilities were not achieved?
I think how it'd play out is that if this application was to be approved today, it is subject to that section 106 agreement, so the permission would actually go to the applicant until that section 106 agreement has been signed. But that would fully commit them to actually paying that commuted sum, so it wouldn't go up or down. We would receive that amount as long as this development did take place.
Gary, you have questions?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report. And it's to you, Mark, actually, Chair, if you don't mind, highways. It's this particular site, entrance here, can we just get through slides for another one? I saw one earlier, not that one, keep going.
Would it be the proposed site layout plan, Council Weatherall? Yeah, okay.
No, not the like, you're on the road.
Outside of the...
No, keep going. No, keep going. Here we go, no, next one.
I'll just flick through everyone, because I've got an aerial photo, I've got an OS based.
Yeah, that'll do.
Okay.
Mark, you were saying about there's other entrances on this road, very similar to this one, so you're going to assess them to me, Mark? I know, I'm not taking over your job by the way, because I keep coming back with highway stuff all the time, don't I? But it's, so if cars are coming in and out, they can manage to get in and out easily, can't they, at that point?
Yeah. I was just saying that the other priority junctions in the area, I mean, Burn Cross Road, most of the junctions are uncontrolled, no traffic lights, priority junctions, so there's a couple here, there's one just here, there's a couple here, and they're all broadly the same scale geometrically as what's being proposed for this development.
You just threw me off at the beginning, you said this one, but you didn't clarify where, so thanks, thanks, Chair. I'll come back for a comment, thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Tony?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a couple of questions. First one, it concerns water runoff. On page 57, it states, "The development will reduce water infiltration due to increased runoff, which could affect surrounding areas and allotments." If you could just expand on that, and also, similar to what councillor Weatherall was talking about in respect of, if you looked at page 73, if you go to page 73, where it states, "It's difficult for refuse collection to enter the site," and it would possibly mean that residents, and there'd be quite a few of them, would have to bring the bins down to the road to be emptied. Surely that would cause a major obstruction on the footway. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I think that's one for Mark.
On the refuse collection, the junction would be designed to accommodate refuse vehicles, and really, it's just the principle of the access that's being determined, but this does show a turning head towards the end of the cul-de-sac, and that turning head isn't sufficient to accommodate a refuse vehicle turning, but when the reserve matter comes in, if this does get approved, then that would be fully designed so that a refuse vehicle can enter the site and turn and leave it. So it would be roadside collections from within the development site, not from Burn Cross Road.
And the other one about the water runoff and the allotment site, that'd be for Andrew?
Yeah, so I was just going to add a bit further to what Mark was saying as well. I think just a point I'd make is that the proposal is up to 14 dwellings as well, rather than it being set in stone. So what Mark's just explained there about if the turning head needs to be made bigger than what's shown on this plan, so that refuse vehicles can come into the site, turn around and leave in a forward gear, you know, that's something that we can just require them to do at the reserve matter stage, even if it meant that they had to lose a plot effectively. And then on page 57, that's actually not, that's us just summarising the comments, objections that we've received from members of the public, so that's not anything as part of our assessment. I mean, it is understood that, and, you know, recognised that there will be a nervousness, an apprehension about the drainage implications of the development, but we have got as part of the application, there is a proposed drainage strategy and a flood risk assessment. I mean, generally speaking, the site is in a flood zone, one which is classed as low risk of flooding. At the moment, there's obviously not any formal drainage system for the land, and there's varying topography, but when the site is built out, then it will have to conform with drainage requirements, which these days means that the elements have to be built with either sustainable urban drainage systems or sufficient attenuation systems within the site so that it collects sufficient surface water before discharging it off-site at a restricted rate in order that, you know, it won't cause a problem off the site. So that's something that, again, we've got consultees and specialist officers involved assessing the proposal, and our drainage officers, they're content with the proposals, subject to conditions, and they've even specified that runoff rate, the maximum runoff rate for surface water discharge, which the development would have to be constructed to.
Brian, you have questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I think it's probably for you, Andrew. So the majority of the site is designated as open space within the Sheffield Unitary Development Plan. We've got an emerging local plan. What would it be designated under the local plan, and would that have any material effect? Because to some extent, the emerging local plan is current, if only partially. That's question number one. I've got question number two, which is in connection with density. So 14 houses is just below the current affordable housing threshold. I think more could be achieved on this site. It seems to be that the site is underused, it's mentioned within the report, I think 17 houses was mentioned as being perfectly feasible. So I think what we need to be doing is making our sites as dense as they can without being over-dense, so my question is, should this be developed a little bit more?
Yeah, I understand the point that you're making. I think that it's a balancing act, really, when it comes to sites like this, so it's classed as a windfall, it's not an allocated site for development. It is obviously heavily surrounded by existing dwellings, and we do have to prioritise and afford a lot of consideration and weight to affording the immunity levels of existing residents. So I think, taking into account that we're achieving much higher densities on the Brownfield Windfall sites, which are in the central areas of the city at the moment, then I think we felt that this was a site that it would have a lot of negative consequences if we were to force them to increase the densities here. I think inevitably it would have impacts on the design, and it would probably push the houses closer to existing properties, and, you know, so we have had quite a lot of objections from the residents that live next to the site, understandably so, it's going to be quite a significant change from them, from it being an open site at the moment and it being vegetated. So I think what we want to do is just to achieve a balance and a mix which, yeah, gets a reasonable number of houses on the site as a form of windfall, but also safeguards the immunity of existing residents. So we want to, you know, keep these... So we want to, you know, keep these spacing standards if we can, which are, you know, healthy distances away from existing properties. And then, yeah, in terms of...
I just respond and say thank you for that. That's the kind of answer I wanted. It was absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. And then, yeah, so just kind of, in terms of that question about the emerging local plan, I mean, we're not afforded, because it's under going examination at the minute, and there's just too much uncertainty as to what's going to happen, as to what the outcome is of that process. So we're not affording decision-making weight to the emerging local plan at this moment in time.
Thank you, Andrew. Richard, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Really for clarification, as much as anything else. This is an outline application. So if this is approved today, all we're really saying is that we're giving, in effect, permission for up to 14 houses to be built on this piece of land with that, with an access point kind of like that. Well, actually, when it comes to a full application, it could look completely different.
Well, there is something which with, again, through conversations with the applicant, again, the case officer, speaks to the agent and thinking about how we can limit the impacts on existing residents and neighbouring properties. We've been able to agree with them so that the green ones which are on there are five bungalows, and we've got that as a condition as part of the recommendations. So that says that for those five plots, they will be limited to single-storey height only because they're the ones which are the closest to neighbouring properties, and some of those are bungalows as well, which neighbour the site. So that would seem a suitable and appropriate thing to do to limit those impacts. And, yeah, we're grateful to the applicant and agent for agreeing to that request.
But technically, if I may, Chair, some of the concerns that other members have about drainage and things like that would also be picked up at the full application, is that correct?
Yes, and, I mean, it's going to be easier once you've got a final design for the layout and the houses, to have a more advanced drainage strategy than what we've got at the minute. So we have got a document which contains principles for a future drainage strategy. So that's something which the council drainage officers are content with. But then it all looks to be picked up as part of the discharge of conditions as well. And I think there's one of the conditions which actually specifies that maximum runoff rate for surface water when it's actually discharged from the site.
Thank you. Cliff, you're indicated.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, unfortunately, I missed the site visit for this yesterday. But at present, it's an area of green land, and how much other sort of open space is there in the area? Because it seemed to me to be quite sort of built up around it, and, you know, that could be providing quite a valuable facility for, you know, from an ecological point of view, and it could be quite a serious loss within that specific area.
Yeah, I think a big point about this site is whilst it is sort of like the green finger that's within an existing built-up area, it's private land, and no members of the public are able to freely access it without trespassing on the land. So other than the residents that, say, you've got houses which, you know, have got a view onto the site, it doesn't actually serve the role in benefiting local community, it's not the formal recreation purpose for sport and recreation, anything like that.
Thank you, can you just come back on that? I wasn't thinking so much of benefiting the community, but from a biodiversity point of view. You know, it could be part of a significant sort of corridor for hedgehogs or whatever.
Yes, I think, again, being through that process of just trying to, the ecological report has assessed the habitats on site and the value of it. That's been able to be set as a baseline for trying to achieve a net gain of biodiversity, which, you know, we're aiming for the 10%. So the fact that we've got ecological officers saying that, yeah, they've looked at the existing habitat value, we're going to, you know, surpass that effectively through the commuted sum that's given to us and the mitigation measures which would be directly provided on site as part of the future development, means that it's actually, you know, a benefit and points towards the application being acceptable on ecological grounds rather than the opposite.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, so there's no more questions, I'm going to move to members' comments.
Chair, could I just come in for a moment, please? Thank you.
Okay, yes, Diana?
Diana, Development Management Service Manager. Just coming back in the query about the section 106 agreement earlier. The recommendation is to grant subject to a legal agreement, that hasn't yet been drafted. Obviously, we would incorporate a trigger into that section 106 agreement for a point in time in which that money should be paid. And if we reach that trigger or go beyond that trigger and it hasn't been paid, then yes, enforcement action is the next step for us. I don't think it would be appropriate to sort of try and incorporate a method by which if it's not paid, we achieve something greater. I think that it's got, you know, section 106 agreements like, conditions have to pass all sorts of sort of reasonable tests. So the process for us, if they don't comply with the requirements of the legal agreement, will be enforcement action.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, can I have comments from members on this? Gary?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. We keep struggling in Sheffield, aren't we, about building, you know, building, building houses? And this, this is a really nice site because it's a mixture, you know, bungalows. I mean, if you're looking around for a bungalow, it's very hard, I'll tell you now, because I'm in the process of looking around. And when you see sites coming like this, it's mixed. And I'm glad officers have done a lot of work on this because, you know, it's down to your hard work that we've got these bungalows. You know what I mean? Because we're helping and supporting the neighbours, what's already there. You know what I mean? So that's great, Andrew. And it's, it is an infilling site, you know what I mean? And like you said, it's a gift to us. We've seen, you know, somebody's seen the process of that and saw it and took it and brought it here. And I shall be voting for it, Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any more comments? Well, I think you've stolen the show there, Gary, and... No, don't apologise. I thought that was a pretty good summing up from that perspective. And I think certainly members will be very interested when it comes back for reserve matters to see what actually is going to be put in place. But I'm not going to prejudge it, I'm going to ask members to take a vote, starting with you, Alan.
Upstaged, Chair.
Support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, thank you.
Support this search, Chair.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Support it, Chair.
For the recommendation.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Yeah, for the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, members. That vote is carried. We're now going to move not to item 7C, but to item 7D, because that one does have speakers, and I'm mindful that not all speakers want to stay right to the, to the end of this afternoon. So that is planning application number 13 stroke 02019 stroke condition 3 dash Jacobs Gate at 32 Troutbeck Road, Sheffield S72AG, and that's on page 93 of the agenda. And Chris is going to take us through the report.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just get the presentation to the right place first of all. So, yeah, this is the kind of application that doesn't come to planning committee very much, which is, you know, members in approving our recommendations impose lots of conditions, but the conditions themselves don't tend to come back to the committee. This is in fact an application to prove details relating to a condition, which is condition number 13. The planning application submitted in 2013, an outline planning application, granted in 2014, and that was set out on page 96 of the agenda papers. This, so the outline planning permission related to redevelopment of this site that you see on the screen now, which was the former Jacobs industrial facility, which is accessed off Troutbeck Road, which is, you can probably see better, ever so slightly better, on this image here. It's the very top of the paper, of the slide, you'll see the, about sort of three or four terrace properties and a turning head, which is the end of Troutbeck Road. So there's access down there, and as you can see on here, there are two significant buildings on it that were permitted as part of the outline permission. The one on the lower side, the southern side, if you like, is a retirement home. And then the one on the northern side, the right-hand side, is Steps Rehabilitation Centre. And it's the Steps facility that this, that this application relates specifically to. In the outline planning permission of 2013, condition 13, as is set out on page 96, halfway down, requires the provision of a riverside walk-stroke cycleway, and that details of that particular walkway have to be submitted to the council for approval before doing so. That condition applied to the whole of the site, but as is often the case with a site that has various phases, the details come in in phases. And what we've actually got on the ground is one riverside walkway connected to the Adlington development, which is on the bottom side, provided in situ, you'll see photographs of it shortly, and to the northern side, one that isn't. So this application deals solely with the one on the northern side. We did approve some details in October 2016 for a three-metre-wide footpath cycleway along the northern river boundary with the Steps facility. And then the Steps facility was opened in 2017, so approximately sort of seven months later. A bit more than that, about nine months later. But in breach of the condition, the walkway wasn't provided before opening and hasn't been provided since. The reason for the application is that we've been pursuing enforcement action to secure its placement, and having discussions, in effect, pre-application stage, with Steps to provide the walkway. Their resistance to so far providing, the reason they haven't carried out the previously approved version, they have their own reasons, but they are based around the implications that that had for the riverbank and the trees within it, and the difficulties of construction that a three-metre section would pose, and associated with that the costs involved in doing so. And after our discussions with them, they're now proposing a footway of varying width of 2 to 2.8 metres. I'll just flick through the images to see if I have anything, yeah. So this image shows the, that northern section of the overall site, and the Steps building is the L-shaped building at the bottom of the page. So you can see, starting from the kind of right-hand side, if you like, where users would come in off Troutbeck Road, across the bridge that leads to the site, and also across a car park to the south-west centre. They would then access the site there on the right-hand side with a width of two metres. And then along its length, approaching that elbow at the top of the page, it varies in length from two, it gradually increases from 2.1 to 2.3, 2.7 to 2.8, just before, that's its widest point, 2.8, just before it then turns left around the elbow, where it begins to reduce to 2.6, and then along the rest of that sort of north-western facing leg, it's in the order of 2.1, 2.3 and 2 metres. And then right at the very end, you can see a brown section, and that is the section on the Adlington scheme next door, which has been provided. So you can see there how it connects, and there is a slightly awkward connection at that point. Along its length, on the southern side of the walkway, so the southern side of the green, if you like, there would be a 1.8-metre palladium fence, and I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. And also then on the northern side of the green, there would be 1.4-metre-high timber post and rail fence facing the river. There is substantial opposition in the representations, you'll see there's two to three pages worth of discussion on that, pages 97 to 100. Not objecting to the principle of the provision, but the quality of the provision. In other words, it's not what is expected. There's several reasons stated for that, but principally around the width, along with other matters as well, around the overall design. So these images, hopefully you can pick out the, I suppose the bottom image is the best place to start, because that is a typical cross-section of the layout of the walkway or through the walkway. So the dotted line is the existing ground level, and you can see that some of that would be cut away on the right-hand side of that drawing, which means on the Steps side of the drawing. And then it would, from the edge of the timber post and rail fence, there would be a riverbank, the remainder of the riverbank flowing down to the river. And the other eight images along there are various cross-sections along its length, which show in some places banks that are steeper than others and footways that are wider than others. Here, you, so the green there, that is the palladium fence that would appear on the non-riverside section of the walk. And these are images of within the Steps site, on the edges of the top of the riverbank, and these areas would be cut away slightly to form a new boundary. The green fence would move inwards at varying distances throughout its length, and the footpath be created beyond it. And this is, again, more images of the garden, which is used by Steps as part of the rehabilitation exercises that they do with their clients. This building here, you'll see reference to it on the, well, it's on both images, but more... more prominently on the right hand image, is a garden room that is built, that is currently unauthorised and doesn't have planning permission within the grounds of Steps. And just beyond that, hopefully, I don't think I've got, yes, so just beyond that is the, where the red brick wall ends, and there is a pier, is the Adlington provided footway, which is what you can see there, which is three metres wide, and that's the kind of the width that we had approved previously, but which is now proving problematic from the applicant's perspective. That is where the slightly awkward junction that I mentioned earlier would occur between the Adlington footway and the now proposed footway. And again, that's looking at the garden room building. Sorry, there are a lot of images here that are, right, okay, so we reached the end. So on the previous scheme, sorry, I should say, right at the very beginning, why is this walkway here in the first and so the request for it within a condition? And it's because the, our policies require access to riverways to provide better leisure access to them, to also promote nationally, more recently, to promote active travel, et cetera. And this is part, this would be part of the River Sheaf Walk, which is being developed over several phases and stages, with links provided by developments and by other means as and when opportunities arise. The previous scheme that we approved in two thousand and sixteen resulted in the order of twenty five trees being removed from the riverbank. So in that area there with the contour lines, there are trees of varying sizes and shapes, and that resulted in approximately twenty five trees being removed, which was at an estimate, I would say, quite a bit more than half of the trees being removed on the riverbank. In this scheme, this is now reduced to fourteen trees, not those shown there, they're the ones that will be retained. And that is a benefit of the revised proposals. It'll retain a greater density of tree cover along that embankment, which does quite a good job of amongst its environmental benefits, screening the two developments from views from Abidale Road, which you can see there quite clearly in the image, there's the access road that drops down to Tesco, and those trees perform quite a strong screening facility. And obviously the more beneficial, it's more beneficial in biodiversity terms in that We do acknowledge it is narrower than approved and than desired in all honesty, because a three metre footway, cycleway is, makes for better use, safer use than a narrow one. And there are some deficiencies in the layout of this one, including, as I mentioned, the slightly awkward junction at the bottom there, in particular. Officers since submission of this particular version have negotiated some improvements along its length, some easing of some of the pinch points, particularly around the elbow at the top there, and a further slight build out of that awkward junction at the bottom, so that there is additional space on the left hand side as you're travelling up the page. So we have secured some improvements here, but it's clear from our negotiations that no more is likely to be achieved in terms of any further improvements in the width. And we've got to the point where we feel that this is the best achievable scheme we're likely to get. And so we're recommending approval on that basis as a step forwards to achieving delivery of an additional section of the Sheaf Walk. So I think that's all I wanted to say by way of introduction, Chair.
Thank you, Chris, for that presentation. We've got four speakers today, all wishing to speak against the application. And the first name I have is Mike Hodson, if you'd like to come to the microphone, please. And you have five minutes, or up to five minutes, to put your case.
Thank you Chair, good afternoon Committee. This objection is actually from the MEC Community Group, that's the Millhouses, Ecclesall and Cartonell Community Group, which I'm the secretary. And our area covers Ecclesall Ward, including this area around the sheaf. Both our group and the previous group have been long supportive of proposals for a sheaf valley walkway linked to a three metre wide walkway alongside the river, open to all users, including those with wheelchairs. This would provide a continuous circling route or multi user accessible route from Millhouses Park right down to the city centre, although there are still one or two other gaps to be sorted out, and that is in line with council policy. The original planning application for this actually came in two thousand and nine and made specific reference to a three metre wide walkway. And the applicant was then quoted as being aware of this and very supportive of it. Unfortunately, there have since been, I can say there's a continuing failures to abide by these plans, including first of all, the development and opening of the Adlington complex without the provision of the walkway until eventually, and then the Steps complex, also without provision of a walkway, contrary to the condition imposed. An ongoing then, a continuing unwillingness, or you might say refusal, by the applicants to accept the enforcement of the original permission. And to add to that, you've got the construction of the garden room, which is done without planning permission, and which does impact upon the walkway, it limits its size. So now a further disturbing expansion is being proposed, based on an out of date plan, which would also mean restrictions on the walkway, and which would limit its width and would limit its usability for the variety of users. And also reduces the safety and immunity value of the walkway. The committee's role, to my mind, is to ensure that council and national planning policies are followed, I'm sure you would agree with that. In this case, that would mean ensuring that the required benefits for local leisure, for the natural environment, and for the wider policy areas of active travel, as mentioned by the planning officer, are achieved. And to my mind, the prevention of this achievement amounts to an abuse of the planning process. The committee should refuse this application and insist on the implementation of the original plans, as agreed on numerous occasions previously by the committee. It should not accept a clearly unsatisfactory compromise, as suggested by the planning report, and I would refer you to the penultimate paragraph of the report, which clearly indicates that there are unsatisfactory aspects of this. To my mind, the committee should send it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hodson. Would Viv Thorne like to come to the microphone, please?
Good afternoon, I'm Viv Thorne, also I'm a trustee of the Sheaf and Porters River Trust, and as the secretary of the trust five years ago, I began the correspondence with Adlington and Steps to negotiate this pathway. At this time, discussions seemed positive and encouraging, to the point where we developed plans for a future connection to the path, to create a safe pedestrian route to Tesco, where it would join with the excellent path established when the supermarket was built, one of the progressive conditions imposed at that time on the planners by the council. This route is extensively used by runners, children, cyclists, and provides a riverside walk all the way to Millhouses Park and Hutcliffe Woods. With the continuation of this path, there would be potential to link Little London Road and the Sheaf cycle path, creating a safe route into town for cyclists and walkers. Such a pathway would be a great asset to the city, to local residents, and to those of both Adlington and Steps, many of whom are wheelchair users. It has the potential to reduce road traffic and to ease local parking issues in the long term. That cannot be achieved without this path. And so we are keen, after waiting all these years, to see it completed to a standard that is fit for purpose and with capacity to be inclusive of all users. These were the terms agreed in the original planning approval application in January two thousand and fourteen, to provide a three metre wide riverside trail. The important point is that this legally binding design remains in force as a condition, and the decision notice actually refers to a drawing M, which shows a three metre wide path throughout. Using other drawings, which show the riverside path as narrow as one point five metres in other applications, the council is being moved to accept a narrower path. The applicant states that condition thirteen was discharged in two thousand and sixteen, but this is not the case. The condition reads, such a link and riverside walk cycleway shall be provided prior to the development being occupied, and it has not. It would appear that this is a last minute attempt by the applicants to avoid the long delayed enforcement action to secure compliance with condition thirteen of the original planning approval. It seems outrageous that by submitting numerous versions of plans for this aspect of the development, and then negotiating not to meet the original conditions, that they are resisting the provision of a usable and attractive river access originally required. The applicants have not only already constructed their buildings without the walkway, but they have constructed two more wooden buildings which intrude even further into the walkway, compromising the width of the path and creating a dangerous corner or blind spot, which in our view must not be improved until the discharge of the condition thirteen has been clearly agreed. It would seem that the applicant is reluctant to undertake necessary bankside reinforcement to achieve the required three metre width, as has been achieved along the Adlington section, and the proposal of the use of inferior surfacing material all indicate a desire to cut costs. The issue of trees screening the site is a red herring, as many of the trees are on the opposite bank and would continue to screen the site. To agree this would not only allow the applicant to fail to meet the original planning conditions, but also the clear objections of the Environment Agency, a statutory consultant, and over fifty other objectors, including local members, residents, and the trust. It would leave the local authority, like so many other public bodies in recent times, apparently unable to deliver on their own stated policies, while also setting a dangerous precedent for the whole river corridor. If planning conditions such as these are not enforced, not only does it send a message encouraging developers to ignore them and do as they wish, but it fails to take this opportunity to achieve a positive vision for the public good, to enable people to use a properly surfaced, adequate, continuous riverside path on the sheaf, Sheffield's own river, from its suburbs to its city centre, while also reducing the city's carbon footprint, ambitions claimed in all local plans and national planning objectives. Surely a win win. We request the committee therefore defer this application until such a time as the three metre design, as specified in the decision notice, is confirmed by the applicant or an alternative of that dimension is submitted. We are of course happy to answer any questions you may have in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you Viv Thorne. Liz Sharp, would you like to come to the microphone, please?
Good afternoon, so I'm Liz Sharp, I'm resident at Nether Edge, Professor of Water and Planning at the University of Sheffield, committee member of Living Street South West Sheffield, and the hat I'm wearing this evening is trustee of the Sheaf and Porter Trust. I'm going to focus on three matters, the width of the path, its material quality, and issues of tradition and precedent. In relation to the width of the path, I mean, you've already had from Chris's report some detail about it. Of the eight sections they gave us on one of the other diagrams, six of those show it less than two point five metres, which is significantly less than three metres, which is the normal expectation. I estimate, I don't have a scale drawing, but I estimate you've got about fifty, sixty metres of consecutive path with less than two point five metres in width, and I see that as completely unacceptable for three reasons. First, a three metre path is necessary for two cyclists to pass or for a wheelchair to pass a cyclist. While I agree that, you know, occasional pinch points are acceptable, this will completely compromise the ability of the path to act as a passageway for cyclists or for wheelchair users, for a variety of users, it would be okay as a footpath. While the officer's report is correct to say that the minimum width was not specified in the decision matter, it did specify the construction of a walkway and a cycleway. And all of the local and national conditions suggest that combined walking and cycling paths should always be three metres. Moreover, as my colleague has suggested, the approved drawing shows a pathway of three metres. In relation, then moving to the second point, in relation to the proposed material, the material is something called Breton wafera, a self binding limestone material frequently used for footpaths. The material manufacturer specifies that Breton wafera is not suitable for vehicles. This indicates that it's unsuitable for both cyclists and wheelchair users, surely not what's needed at this point. Recent planning permission for Costa Coffee, a mile downstream, required full hard standing of adequate quality. Such requirements therefore have precedent, and this should be maintained. While the proposed material was used at the adjacent Adlington site upstream, it's already puddling and moss is growing on it, showing in a sense its unsuitability. Finally, turning to the issues of tradition and precedent, I want to make three points. First, the section of the path by Steps is a vital missing link, which when connected to the Adlington path and the short section that Tesco have promised to construct, will significantly improve active travel facilities in the Sheaf Valley. Second, as demonstrated previously, the three metre walking and cycling path was required in the original planning permission, the applicant should not be rewarded for failing to fulfil the conditions that they themselves have agreed to in their own plans. Though the applicant say the costs of building this are high, and that that's a problem, as the officer's report also points out, this should not be a material consideration in your decision. Sheffield City Council has a really good and proud record of pushing for and developing riverside paths, the five ways walk and so on. It would be really a shame if this planning committee were to approve this completely inadequate proposal for this section of path. Thank you.
Thank you Liz Sharp. Lastly, councillor Barbara Masters, we should have all declared that you are known to this committee, but we should all say that it will not prejudge or influence. I'm going to find, what's the right phrase for words, I've lost it now. But you have been a member of the committee, so we do know you in that personal capacity.
Wrong side, okay. There are a number of issues I wish to raise with regards to this application. The application of two thousand and thirteen states, policy GE seventeen of the Unitary Development Plan deals with rivers and streams and encourages the creation of a continuous public footpath along a bank of major rivers and streams, and that the walk cycleways required to be five metres in width to provide a three metre wide footpath and a two metre wide landscaping band. Yet in the report, it clearly states that a three metres wide footpath is to be provided, sorry, that report states it's got to be provided, and yet page one oh two of the report states that condition thirteen does not specify a minimum walkway width, which is correct. That's a question. The officer report for the condition thirteen- The officer report for the Condition 13 in 2013 states that the materials and construction details shown for the riverside walkway were considered to be acceptable and that they should be approved and be required to remain in force. To me, this means the developer must have provided the details which were in line with the conditions, yet it built Steps' facility without also constructing the walkway, and since then additional structures have been built which impact on the land that should be used for its creation. The developer had full knowledge that the building encroached on the proposed walkway and now argues for one of widths ranging from two to 2.9 metres instead of the three. This demonstrates total disregard for planning laws and takes advantage of the pressure planning enforcements are under. Point three, we've been told that retrospective planning application of 23 for the additional structures on site can't be considered as part of this application. Yet the planning adviser at the Environment Agency wants a condition imposed so that no development shall take place until a scheme for the provision and management of an eight-metre-wide buffer zone along the river sheaf has been submitted to and approved in writing by the local authorities. And the adviser goes on to say, 'We understand that a plan is now in place to implement the riverside walkway. A plan is enclosed with this application to demonstrate that the proposals will not impinge on the route or width, brackets three metres, of this riverside walkway.' So where is it? Can the officer explain why the environmental agency is of the view that a three-metre walkway is proposed in the retrospective planning application, while the one under discussion makes clear the width will be below this figure? And my last point is personal, because councillor Shaffack Mohammed and councillor, then councillor Roger Davidson, met with highways officers to discuss the riverside walkways through to Millhouse as to accommodate cycling and walking in our drive to encourage active travel. Sheffield promotes itself as an outdoor city. Residents and visitors alike should be able to enjoy the huge benefits of being outdoors in spaces free from traffic. The draft local plan expands on the opportunities and benefits of protecting our outdoor spaces; this application restricts it. I ask the committee to reject this application to water down the duty imposed on the developer by Condition 13 because it knowingly ignored the agreement it entered into in the earlier applications. It erected structures on land set aside for the walkway in the knowledge that it would reduce its usability. It assumes the planning authority will make the compromises, despite it resulting in a walkway that diminishes its usability for the wider public. The submission of a retrospective planning application shows a cavalier's attitude for planning regulations and planning enforcement. It is perverse that a developer can ignore planning conditions it has agreed to that will prevent the council ensuring developments meet the needs of the wider population in pursuit of its own personal and organisational gain. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. There are a number of points there, but I think central to this is the three-metre walkway and what we actually have set down in previous planning applications that allude to it.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. There were a lot of comments, and I won't respond to any or any of them, because I think some of them were also just statements. So, yeah, starting with the width. The width wasn't specified in the regional outline permission. It was, as is often the case with an outline application, as we were discussing earlier, it was annotated on the original drawings, it was part of that permission. There was then a proposal to comply with that permission, if you like. The application that was submitted, just catch up with the report. So midway down page 97 is 1302019 stroke cond 1. That application approved details at three metres, and that was after it was originally submitted at less than three metres. And through our negotiations with them on that particular application, it was secured, if you like, at three metres, and the application, the conditions detailed submitted were then At this point, it's probably worth me responding how I intended to, to one or two of the comments that were raised. There was reference to what that decision means. Was it discharged? And there's sort of differences in these. Was it discharged or was it approved and remains in force? And just to clarify that, it was approved in 2016, 17, whenever the decision was, 2016, and it remains in force. It wasn't discharged. So discharged is a term often used in relation to conditions, and it means that the applicant has done everything they need to do and there's no ongoing obligation, if you like. The wording of certain conditions often carry with them a provision or retention reason and what have you. And that was, so it was, the decision taken there was that we'd approved the details and until it was implemented, it remained in force. So hopefully that does clarify that. So we have at this stage, we're up to a stage where we've got an approval of a three-metre walkway. That wasn't implemented, and then it becomes an enforcement matter. There isn't anywhere that sets down in the original outline or reserve matters permission a requirement for three metres. The three metres comes from what people have referred to, quite correctly, as being a more appropriate width and what we would strive for and what we ultimately approved in the condition submission in 2016. So I think the question now really is whether members regard what is now proposed as a width as acceptable, not necessarily whether it meets a previous commitment to three metres. I hope that makes sense. So there were suggestions in the comments made that the committee should refuse the application and insist on the implementation of three metres. That is clearly an option, that you don't agree with officer's recommendation, and that would then put the onus on enforcement of the original details. And there was also suggested that we should perhaps defer until we achieve three metres. Our view from our negotiations so far is that that's unlikely to be achieved, but if members wanted to defer the application and in effect send that message back to the applicant, then that would be an option. I don't think I wanted to say anything more, Chair, because other than, I think that the surface for the material, we haven't taken issue with. I don't know if Mark's got any thoughts about that from his knowledge of such treatments and facilities, but we didn't regard the material as an issue in this case. Our main concern has been the width, and we've, as I said earlier, we've gone as far as we feel we can with that. One final comment was about reference to the retrospective application can't be considered. Yeah, all we're saying is that there are two separate applications in at the moment. There's this application for the, for what you've got before you, the walkway as proposed, and then there is also been a more recent application for Steps to expand their facility. And they are looking to do that in the north-eastern portion of the site, between their existing building and the area of the now proposed walkway. And they've also included on the application the unauthorised garden room. So when we come to determine that application, when it's gone through its process, we will be making an assessment and a judgment on that particular garden room. But we've detached that from this because they are separate issues, albeit I understand that there is some understanding of an overlap because one seems to be constraining the other. But it's not here for determination today, Chair, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for that clarification, Chris. Go to questions now, and Gary, if you have some.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm absolutely gutted, really. We've been at this for decades, trying to get these walkways inside our rivers done. And if Peter Price were here, he'd be on his feet now screaming, because we sit around this table four or five hours on planning, we listen to officers, and thanks for your report, Chris, and that, yeah. But we shouldn't be here. We shouldn't be here doing this, none of us, because it's illegal. They've broke the bargain with us. We've passed what they wanted at the time, you know what I mean, on their say-so, what they're going to give to Sheffield, they're going to give back to us, and they haven't given back to us. They've reduced it all the way along, Chair, and that's...
Gary, can you make this a question, please?
I know, and this is a question. Well, the question is, Chair, I want to know where we are in enforcement, why aren't we in enforcement, Vicky? Why hasn't it gone to legal? I'm sorry to drag you into it, but it sits with you, this. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I don't know if someone from that side was about to kind of leap in there, but can I just, from an enforcement perspective, always the approach with enforcement is to try and secure, to remedy any breach through negotiation initially, and that's what we've tried to do as part of this. So the initial contact with Steps and with landowners about delivering the walkway were the first stages of enforcement, if you like. So it has commenced and got to a point where there was agreement that they would come to the table to provide something, and that resulted in a pre-application inquiry where we talked about what could and couldn't be achieved and why they felt that certain things couldn't be achieved. So all that process, it's gone on for far too long, but all that process has been without a kind of capital E enforcement. So there has been some progress on that, and that's what brought us to this point. And now the question is, is that acceptable or not? And if not, we would then have to attempt to go further.
Well, enforcement, enforcement as far as I'm concerned is that, you know, you should stick to what were written down and got passed at the time, Chris. It's no good them coming back to say, oh, well, can we have this and can we have that and can we reduce it, this and that. That, in my, from my point of view, that's not it. So I do need some legal advice. Where are we with this now, Vicky?
Victoria?
Thank you. You know, without wanting to seem to be playing internal shops, if you like, obviously the planning service is our client and we've not been asked to advise on any enforcement. But obviously, Chris is right in terms of we need to be dealing with all applications in a proactive manner, we've got to help applicants. So obviously we'll be making those informal enforcement inquiries with them, and this is what has come as a result, and now before you, in terms of is this reasonable to the previous position or not? So, you know, you've been included in this process. So obviously in terms of legal, we haven't been asked to advise on the enforcement position yet, but obviously that may be something that could happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I'm going to go to Marianne now.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to those of you who've come in to speak on this. I just want to say, it's, I mean, we've heard that there's resistance to not carrying out the previously approved version from the landowners, and it's just a real shame that the landowners aren't here today to explain the issues that, you know, they are facing. I know Steps do really great work with, you know, people who are, you know, sort of very severely injured, but it would have been good for them to come and explain what the challenges are. Just want to clarify with officers, cost is not a material consideration for us here, is it?
No, cost specifically isn't, no. The waters can get a little bit muddy where it comes into reasonableness and proportionality, et cetera, but cost, actual numbers, et cetera, no, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you for that. So I think we need to look at the, you know, the original aim of the condition then. You know, not only does the creation of the continuous footpath, you know, it weighs very heavily. I mean, in terms of the policy, you know, it needs to be given a lot of weight, doesn't it, under the G17 UDP? But not only that, it is a really huge asset for Sheffield to make the most of our rivers and streams, you know, the huge amenity value, active travel, health and wellbeing, you know, not to mention the nature corridor. So quality is clearly very, very important here. And on visiting the site yesterday, I mean, it was really obvious to me that the proposed narrowness where the two structures have been erected without consent, you know, really is the elephant in the room. And I understand that the existence of those structures is a separate issue, which is not to be determined here, but, you know, to make a decision, I need to know if the removal or the repositioning of those structures that have been erected without consent has actually been properly considered. Because I haven't seen anything in writing that suggests that that has actually been properly considered, that they could be moved.
Chris?
I think the simplest way of answering that, Chair, is to say that we have asked the question as part of our negotiations to see, to widen the walkway as to whether that can be relocated, and that is one aspect that has been resistance to from the applicant.
Okay. I mean, for those who didn't go, it's on page 45, I mean, you can see, you know, there's a structure there that isn't, you know, it's not a brick-built structure or anything, so feasibly it could be moved. It just seems like a really obvious solution to that part of the path. And then on the other side of the path, page 39, so where it says it ties the new walkway to the existing footway, that's only two metres. So again, back to the width of it being unacceptable. There's, I think there's an electricity substation there, but the proposal doesn't go all the way up to it. I just wondered if there's any reason why it can't be widened there.
Chair, I've not been part of those detailed negotiations, but from my impression on site, the generator substation facility, whatever it specifically is, is somewhat elevated, and I think levels might be an issue, but I can't answer that specifically why that isn't any wider at that point.
Okay, and has that been addressed specifically, why it can't be wider at that point by the landowner?
I don't believe it has, in terms of a submission as to explain why each section is only whatever width it is. The officer who's dealt with the case has gone through the length of the walk, if you like, with the applicants exploring areas where widening could occur, and that's what's happened through, well, both at pre-application stage and during the submission of the application. Extra widths, slight repositioning has occurred where possible.
Okay, thanks. Can I just ask about the surfacing as well, this Breeden Wayfarer? Because, I mean, I've been reading about it, apparently it's a self-binding gravel, and there's really conflicting opinions about whether it's a suitable surface for wheelchairs and other wheels. So I think there's an acceptance that, you know, some degree of maintenance will be needed, page 102, but if that surface, it does become problematic, you know, will the council be able to enforce any action from the owners to keep it in a safe condition?
A maintenance schedule was submitted with the forms part of the application. It's not to be adopted in any way, so it would be private, so it would be down to them to maintain. I'd have to look back at the wording of the condition to see if there was anything that specifically related to its maintenance. that specifically related to its maintenance. There isn't anything specifically in there that refers to maintenance of it. So the strength of any enforcement action or requirement to maintain might be limited.
Okay, thank you. That does concern me, actually. And have the landowners considered any other surface? Has that been considered at all?
I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
Thank you, Marianne. Can I move on to Nikki next? And after Nikki, we've got Richard, then Nigat, Tony, and then Brian.
Thank you, Chair. Really straightforward. So this is the best we can achieve through negotiation. Therefore, looking at enforcement, as somebody relatively new to the committee, could you just talk me through what enforcement means and how enforceable it is?
So enforcement in this instance would, I think, there are various ways to pursue enforcement action. It would most likely be a breach of condition notice that if not complied with, would then, there's a potential prosecution. And that's kind of the normal route. And then sometimes that process is repeated until it is complied with. There are various other, without, I'm kind of thinking out loud here as opposed to having gone through the details of what... and various sort of searches around land ownership and that kind of thing that we would need to undertake before we could serve notices. So there might be a possibility of us serving a formal enforcement notice as well. There are various options. A breach of condition notice, there is no appeal against, and an enforcement notice, there is.
And if that route was followed and they lost, so to speak, and they still didn't build the path, what would happen then?
It depends which route we took. So it's my understanding, I don't know if colleagues have got any different or slightly more informed knowledge, my understanding would be that at prosecution stage, assuming non-compliance with a breach of condition notice, that that would then lead to prosecution if a prosecution was successful. And following that, there was non-compliance with the notice still, then that can be repeated. And non-compliance with an enforcement notice can also result in fines, et cetera. I'm not quite sure of the latest.
Sorry, I missed that last line, Chris.
Sorry, I was going to say...
How much was the question being asked, the fines?
Obviously, reading the screen. In terms of breach of condition notice, if it's not fully complied with, it is an unlimited fine that's available to the magistrate's court to impose. So that's in the planning practice guidance.
Thank you for that. Can I move on to Richard now?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, coming back to, the crux to me seems Condition 13 on page 96. It talks quite specifically that before a spade is put in the ground, Steps had to provide a proposal, and that had to be approved in writing. Now, I assume, Chris, and that's my question rather than comment, is I assume that process went through, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, Chair, yeah.
And therefore, there is a written documentation of what they felt was acceptable to them at the time. And I assume it was, because it was acceptable to the local authority, then it must be quite near what we would ideally like to have. And I suppose our, the comment really is, why don't they do that? As it was hap, they were prepared to do that before. Or the alternative assumption is they had no intention of doing it, and that's not for me to make.
I'm not sure there's a question there, Chair.
My question was, did that process happen?
Yes, so they, you said prior to development commencing on site, did they submit the details and were they approved before, you know, commencement on site? I can't categorically say that because the timings that I mentioned earlier suggest that there might have been some activity on site around the time the application was approved. So it was, the details were approved in October 2016, and the building was opened in May 2017, which is fairly short timescale. So that suggests that perhaps they were on site, which unfortunately is quite common. But yes, it was approved nine months or so before they were opened.
Nigat, you have a question?
Yeah, it was actually similar to councillor Richard. My question was in terms of if the planning permission wasn't there, how we actually managed to get through? What kind of steps were made or was the developer, Steps, for example, if there was any challenges that they were facing, whether they mentioned at that stage, before it even got to this stage? And also what steps can be taken to look into what challenges they are facing? Because I feel from listening to, thank you for the presentations, the speakers, and also the report, it's really important for the width. You know, sometimes we don't feel that they matter, but for two reasons, safety and accessibility, what I'm picking up, and just as working in the community as well. It's benefiting with everything what we're doing, active travel, encouraging people to walk and use these spaces, and also reducing antisocial behaviour. Because we often see neglected walkways, they're often, there's a lot of antisocial behaviour which actually stops people from actually using those spaces. And we've been working hard, I know, as part of community...
Yeah, you're in danger of going into comments, and we're still at the question stage.
Basically, one, in terms of the, what's it, the permission, the process at that stage, was it clear that if certain steps are taken, these are the consequences? And secondly, can we discuss further what challenges this, the steps have so that they can be supported?
Chair, as was mentioned earlier, Steps aren't here. The applicant isn't here to kind of speak themselves. So I'm somewhat speculating, and I'm reluctant to do that. But it's my understanding that their concerns in not providing the facility were around impact on the garden areas, which they see as a significant part of their rehabilitation process for their clients. So it's disturbance, et cetera, of that. It's worth recalling, though, that there is, the proposals they put forward doesn't all take place riverside of the green fence and leave all that completely untouched. It does involve incursions into that, some level changes, some removal of vegetation, et cetera. So it'd be unfair of me to suggest that they don't want any damage or reduction in that space because that would occur as part of the proposals. But I can't speak for them as to why. I think the part of your question, they were certainly fully aware of the requirements.
Thank you, Chris. I've got Tony next, and then I should add, we've then got Brian and then Cliff. And I'm hoping we can then move to comments.
Mine's more of a comment than sort of, I'll wait while you've done your questions.
Thank you, Tony, much appreciated. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the biggest item in my council inbox has been pedestrian road and cycle safety. I've had to accommodate a lot of that because we've got a large increase in cycle use in the city. So this is what it crystallizes down to me here about the safety of these new proposals. So is there any, Chris, any practical reason, kind of structural or otherwise, why the original proposal shouldn't be completed? And they would actually get a three-metre path?
Yeah.
Is there anything there?
It kind of goes back to what was in the beginning, I think, that it... and if I use... These plans, which aren't particularly clear, I appreciate this kind of scale. But these works involve some, effectively, some removal of land within the Step's current fence line, excuse me, and some building out over the riverbank and securing over the riverbank, which is sloping. So there is, there's a physical engineering, structural aspect to it there that is needed. And the wider it gets, the more of that there is. So in some areas, that's only about 200 millimetres, which doesn't seem a great deal. In other areas, it might be a metre. And a consequence of that is tree loss. And that, in a nutshell, they're the practical implications of a wider facility. So there'd be, I presume, well, it goes without saying, there'd be greater cost and engineering work involved in a wider footway, unless it was, unless it came further into the Step site, of course. And the potential for greater tree loss, yeah. I can't say exactly how many because it depends in which location, how far they'd go.
If it's a cycle passing a wheelchair and vice versa, it's troublesome. If it's not three metres, okay, I'll be in the... Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Lastly, I've got Cliff, and then we'll move to comments.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little bit concerned about the legal route. If we end up having to prosecute with an unlimited fine, well, we say an unlimited fine, but they might get fined, I don't know, what? £10,000? At which point they might say, great, you know, is that the end of it? Do they then have to go, we have to still provide the path? Or can they say, okay, we've paid the fine. We don't have to provide the path now?
Thank you, Chair. It's not something I've had to deal with before. But you can serve an enforcement notice as well as a breach of condition notice. So you've got another method there. But what I would say is that one other sort of route that may happen is if members are inclined to refuse this application, and this application may get appealed. And obviously, then it would go down to the planning inspectorate to deal with. Or we may get something completely different that isn't enforcement of the condition. It might be the resolution of that appeal, might be through the inspectorate. So that's something else for members to bear in mind is that, you know, it isn't refuse this, and then it definitely would be enforcing the condition. You know, obviously, in terms of enforcement, you've got a discretion there whether to enforce. And when you've got the subject of the enforcement issue being potentially subject to an appeal, that's something that we would take into consideration, you know, deciding whether to enforce. But just take the opportunity while I'm here just to mention that, obviously, in terms of what we would be enforcing, it would be the condition. And as the officer said, the condition doesn't include reference to the three metres. So it's just, you know, just reiterating that, that what's on the table now is one of the ways the applicant wishes to comply with the condition, which doesn't state a width. Obviously, I appreciate the previously submitted details that gave that width. So it is, you know, in terms of, from a legal perspective at the moment, there is sort of, you know, a little bit of a grey area in terms of we would be enforcing the condition but potentially relying on the previously submitted details, which aren't actually part of the condition itself. So just want to sort of, you know, probably add to your sort of, you know, desire for clarity, but also just to give that view that, obviously, in terms of the way this may play out, there's, you know, the different things that may come up. Thank you.
Have you got a question, Nikki?
But when we talked before about the route that could end up with an unlimited fine, that was for enforcement of a condition, wasn't it? Or breach of a condition?
Yeah.
But that's a condition that doesn't mention three metres.
It doesn't specifically mention three metres, no.
In the report, and we heard it from one of the speakers, it said, it does say, and I'm sure they clarified for me, you have this metre for this particular thing and this metre for that, so it all adds up to three metres. That's right, isn't it? That's what you say. If you don't mind...
I think the reference that councillor Wetherall was referring to was a reference from councillor Masters when speaking earlier to supporting information to the policy that promotes cycleways and walkways that has a suggestion of five metres. The three metres that we've talked about here before, I think we're right back at the question at the beginning now, are that the outline permission itself doesn't specify three metres, it specifies a walkway. The next step was that details were submitted to discharge, or to, sorry, to seek approval of the details under that condition. That came in initially at less than three metres. Officers, because three metres is our preference and the appropriate guidance figure is three metres, we secured three metres at that stage. The condition itself doesn't actually specify three metres. And then subsequently, what's happened is, for whatever reason, three metres hasn't, nothing's been provided, never mind three metres. And now what's been put forward is between two and 2.8 metres.
Wasn't there a suggestion from one of the speakers earlier? Was it the Environment Agency had written that it should be three metres? Does it mention cycleway in the condition?
But you don't have to actually say it. It doesn't actually say it in that, what you're saying, Chris. You don't have to say where you're saying it is. I'm sorry, Chair. We don't have to say what you're saying in the condition. Before all that, it got brought up into the committee. So they knew at the time. It doesn't have to, I mean, look at Victoria now, she knows I am. You know what I mean? To clarify that, because it says it in the report, and we all voted on that, knowing that it's going to be three metres, that should have been your saying. It should have been tightened up under that condition.
Yeah, I mean, that's why in the previous application, we, not that specifically, but all those factors that it's acknowledged and we approached the walkways with the intention of securing three metres, that that's what the appropriate figure was. In terms of, one of the points that was raised was, you know, why is the A suggesting three metres required? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know where that's come from. I can't speak for the A. But they, you know, as a consultant, they've made a comment about a three-metre width, whether that's something that was shown on a plan that they're referring to. I don't know, because I haven't seen that comment at the moment.
Does the condition mention a cycleway as well as a footpath?
The condition, yes, mentions a riverside walk stroke cycleway.
So it's coming down to whether we think that there's enough in there in the history of these successive planning applications that actually amounts to three metres? And whether we believe that a fair-minded inspector would interpret it that way?
And whether they would regard what's submitted as acceptable, as appropriate provision, yeah.
Sorry, Victoria, you wanted to comment, or was it Mark?
Just brief that on. In terms of evidencing what's expected, all of the other sort of five-wheeled walk, shared surface, and round the back of the Unite development, where they've got the Riverdon, and the rolling mills, go off Ball Street Bridge, they were all provided at three metres. And I think it was actually specified in the condition that shared cycle, the shared cycle pedestrian routes in those locations should be three metres. So in terms of evidencing what might be expected... So in terms of evidencing what might be expected, whether that helps in this case, I don't know.
Thank you, Chair. And just to sort of add to that, obviously, maybe members may be inclined to think here that they're inclined to refuse the application because it's an insufficient width. You know, that's obviously something that you may want to consider. But I just wanted to reiterate in terms of the enforcement position, just to remind members that one of the potential outcomes of that decision could be that this decision is then appealed and the inspector would look at that condition 13. Obviously, we, you know, in terms of whether we were looking at that, we would perhaps, you know, make the point about three metres, et cetera. But the inspector would be looking at that condition 13 and whether the applicant is proposing to provide something that they think complies with that condition. And obviously, you know, three metres isn't in there. So that, you know, obviously, the inspector will be deciding, you know, could be deciding whether this is a reasonable way to deal with that condition. And so I just wanted to sort of make that point to members. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Victoria. Is it a question? Gosh. So we've got, and it's coming from Marion or is it coming from you, Richard? Well, it was your hand I saw first, so, Richard.
When it comes to, I mean, it's almost that three metres is irrelevant. At some point in the past, unless I've got it wrong, and I've asked Chris again, the local authority and the applicant agreed on a detailed footpath. They agreed to build that. And we agreed that that was suitable for our purposes. Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, yes, Chair.
So I would have thought the inspector would bear that in mind. And of course, the other thing, if I've got it wrong, they could have appealed the original condition 13. Is that correct?
Yeah, they could have appealed the imposition of the condition, yes.
Which they have not done.
Marion, did you have a separate question?
Yeah, I think it's going towards a proposal, to be honest, because we just, we have not got clarity on this. And I think, you know, the expectation within the condition, you know, there is an understanding that that was three metres. And I think the condition does explicitly refer to a drawing which shows three metres. So if we've not been provided with the full information, I think that is a bit of a problem. Um, for me, I don't see how we can discharge this condition today. Um, I really don't see how we can. We don't have the essential information. We don't have the essential information.
Sorry, you're putting comments in now, so.
So my proposal is that we defer until we get proper information. We need a feasibility from the landowner to tell us how, you know, they've considered moving those structures that they've erected unlawfully. And there's a lot more that needs to be considered here before we can't, we can't just discharge this condition with the information we've got. So I suggest we defer. I put a motion forward that we defer.
I'm not clear why you're wanting to defer rather than to reject the...
Okay, I'd be minded to reject it then.
Right, well, you're moving to comments now.
Sorry, Chair, could I just ask the planning officer just to confirm? I think the member comment there was about a plan reference in the condition. I don't think that's the case. Thank you.
Chair, there is no plan reference in the condition.
In the original.
Chair, I think the confusion may be that in the condition discharge application, the decision notice in respect to the condition discharge, can't say that properly, did refer to the plan that they submitted as part of that application. But what we were talking about in terms of enforcement is enforcing the condition that was on the original application. And that condition doesn't refer to a plan or a width. And so it wouldn't be about enforcing what they previously submitted. It would be about enforcing the condition. And that goes back to what I've said before is that what, you know, as another member pointed out, the inspector may give way to what's previously been submitted and not supplied. But ultimately, it would be enforcing the condition. And the condition neither has a plan or a width. Thank you, Chair.
Is that definitive then? Because my understanding is there was a subsequent revision with reference to three metres. I don't know how we can decide this without that information.
Chair, I would attempt to try and explain this, but it is very complicated. And what's confusing matters is, um, the the conditions application that was approved in 20, I keep forgetting the date, 2016, I think, where the details for the walkway were first approved. That, that application included many other things apart, in addition to the walkway. So there were lots of pre commencement conditions on that permission. And lots of drawings were submitted as part of that, as part of that permission. Uh, when we issue a decision on conditions applications, we don't list drawing numbers that are approved. Unlike issues regularly, you see in committee papers, the second condition invariably is a reference to the approved documents. That doesn't happen with conditions applications. So we've got a series of conditions under various disciplines being applied for, including landscaping, contamination, materials, all sorts of things. And one of those happens to be the walkway. Um, because those drawings often overlap to some extent in an attempt to clarify matters on another condition, not this particular one, uh, there was a reference to a particular drawing number in brackets. And that drawing number was an earlier iteration of the walkway, which showed it at 1.5 metres. And that's when I said we weren't happy with that and we saw improvements. So I'll use letters, and I think I've got them right. So that drawing number was revision L. Um, and that showed a walkway of 1.5 metres. The reference on the decision notice was to another condition. I don't know if it was this, but I'll use, um, contamination as an example. It referred to contamination being acceptable as identified on, uh, on drawing number revision L. So that was referring specifically to the contamination. That was the only, it won't be contamination, I'm using that just as an example. Um, that was the only reference to a drawing number on that decision notice. And what happened when we were coming towards committee, members might recall that this was on the agenda in July, I think, or August. Um, and what happened is the applicant and their team thought we were using the wrong drawing reference. Um, sorry, thought we were using the wrong width in referring to three metres because they saw this reference to this drawing number, letter L, saw that it was only one and a half metres on that and thought that that was what we'd approved previously. When in fact, it wasn't because there was a later revision to that drawing, letter M, before we approved the width of the walkway, and that was at three metres. I hope that explains things.
Sorry, you can't contribute to this. I'm sorry about that. Be that as it may. We are past that stage now, unfortunately. So.
Can I just ask one more question then? It's about enforcement. Are we saying that there has never been a breach of condition notice served on the landowner?
I can't be certain. Um, I can't be certain of that. I don't think so. I can't be certain.
Is that something that we can ask for? In our capacity?
I think it would be wrong to focus on breach of condition because there are many, um, ways to tackle enforcement action. So it would simply be requesting that officers pursue enforcement action. If that makes sense. If, in a way, I suppose what I'm saying is if the committee were to direct officers to pursue breach of condition notices and they turned out to be the wrong vehicle for enforcing, then that would constrain officers. But we're not getting what we asked for.
If I can just bring a bit of order and try and attempt a bit of clarity here. I think we have chewed this over and asked a lot of questions. We've got a lot of answers that we are having some difficulty reconciling. But I think we have to decide whether this application is valid or not. And I think we now have to move to comments on how you feel about this application, given all the additional information you've had. And I've got Tony and then Mark wanting to comment. So, Tony.
Thank you, Chair. It never ceases to amaze me, never ceases to amaze me how landowners and developers can put a plan in and then deviate from that plan and get away with it. I'm dealing with what in my wood at the moment. And it's just frustrating. And there needs to be some regulation here where when they put applications in, they stick to those applications. And if they don't stick to those applications, there should be, there should be, um, conditions placed upon them and sanctions. And that's all I really wanted to say on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mark?
Um, yeah, just, um, out where I live in Stockbridge, on the town council which I sit on at Stockbridge, we spend a lot of our time chasing up the developers who are building houses all over the place in Stockbridge on greenfield sites. Uh, for just minor infringements of what they'd agreed, so it doesn't come before you lot here. The minor infringements, just because they seem to think that they can get away with it. Now, the other group that was next to this development clearly thought it was a three metre wide path. Clearly, they thought it. Um, there are people, there are developers who have inadvertently breached the conditions of their applications and they can perhaps be corrected. But then there are developers who simply take the mickie. And I think this is falling into the latter characteristic, so I'm against the proposal.
Thank you, Mark. Nikki, you ought to comment.
Nikki earlier talked about considering what might happen if it goes to appeal, what a decision might be. I can't help but think about what might happen if we don't enforce or don't, you know, open the pathway to enforcement. Again, because we are making it clear that you can agree one thing and do another. And so I think that makes it pretty straightforward as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Nikki. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, without wishing to sound like a crack record, I would be very keen to know what the details of the, um, proposal from the applicant was originally, which they agreed to do. We agreed that it was acceptable. Um, and they should be held to that as a minimum. Um, I understand, and I, Chris's frustration and pragmatic approach of something is better than nothing, but that's not the point. It's, it comes back to Mark's point and Nikki's point that if we let this go as it is, I think it undermines the authority of the planning committee and the planning authority. Because it's just saying literally, yes, we'll agree to some conditions. We've got no intention to abide by them and the council won't do anything about it. And I think it's time to really, you know, put a stand in the ground.
Thank you, Richard. Victoria, you want to comment at this point?
Yeah, sorry, Chair. I appreciate, you know, the frustration around the room. But I just wanted to remind members that when we're dealing with applications, we don't take people's previous behaviour sort of into account. So that's not a reason for refusing something. Neither is because you would like to see something else. So in terms of if members are minded to refuse this, I just want to, you know, reiterate that, you know, we need to be thinking about the planning reasons for why this isn't, in your view, a sufficient way of dealing with this condition. And so just to remind you in terms of that, you know, why is what is being proposed unacceptable? And I would suggest that it's not what was previously submitted, isn't it? Obviously, in terms of what the differences are, yes, they may be the planning reasons, but not just that we prefer the old one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Victoria. Nikki, that's...
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo the same thing as well, that if something is actually, um, put in place, it should be followed. But because we've had no clear, um, view in terms of where this three, um, three metre came from, I think it might be useful to, in future also, when conditions or anything is put in place, to make it clear, not just say a width, rather say what is ideal. Because obviously, I'm sure the homework is done before putting that, like he's mentioned, that Mark mentioned, that there are several other, um, similar walkways where it's three metres. So just so that developers, it might help them that, you know, this is it, so I can't go less or, you know, beyond, but making sure that is consulted. But I feel strongly that the width definitely needs to be wider.
Thank you, Nikki. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And yes, Victoria, you're absolutely right. We're voting on this particular condition at this particular time. I feel it seriously compromises the use of a pedestrian foot and cycleway for pedestrians, cyclists and wheelchair users because they can't safely pass one another. And I can't vote for an unsafe walkway. And that's the reasons why I'm doing it. So very particular reasons for this specific case.
Before I take any more, can I just clarify with Victoria? Relevant planning history is a material consideration in what decision we come to. Is that correct?
And as we've heard earlier, consistency in planning decisions is something that you should be taking into consideration. Obviously, each, you know, item is on its merits. But part of the consistency in planning decisions is that, you know, applicants should be, you know, should be able to rely to some extent that the planning, um, authority will take a similar decision, similar case. So, you know, you wouldn't have one thing on the adjacent piece, on the adjacent side and then it wouldn't be acceptable on the next side, if you like. So yes, previous decisions are a material consideration. Then obviously, not the only consideration. They don't override other, you know, potentially material considerations. But yes, certainly, consistency in planning decisions is something to consider. But as I say, it's not the only thing, you know, you can consider other issues that may think, well, that was decided before, but now, you know, there's other material factors that come in that would mean that it's reasonable to make a different decision. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, I'm going to move to a vote now. So I'm going to ask Alan for your view.
I'll vote with the officer's recommendation, Chair.
I think echoing what's been said before, to make our walkways accessible to all people, whatever their ability, physical ability. And the fact that cost isn't a material consideration. Um, I, and I think there is consistency because we have made this decision before, you know, in terms of what should happen. I am going to vote against the officer's recommendations.
Against, Chair.
Against the recommendation, Chair.
Against, Chair.
Against, Chair.
Against, Chair.
Against.
Against the recommendation, Chair.
Against the recommendation, Chair.
Yeah, against the recommendation.
That's almost unanimous.
Chair, can I just remind you of the process that we undertake now?
Well, we need to give the reasons.
Well, in terms of what happens now, obviously, that was the vote on the officer recommendation. So that vote has been lost. So now a member needs to propose refusing. Obviously, and then you need to go through that process. Obviously, before a member proposes to refuse the application, they need to give the planning reasons why they propose to do so. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Vicky?
All right, can I just check? Diana, do you want to say something?
Diana, do you want to?
I mean, it seems to me that the concerns are the width of the route.
I mean, it seems to me that the concerns are the width of the routes to be able to accommodate all the users of the route that need to be accommodated on it. The sort of segregated psychopath that got approved at this committee as part of the supermarket near the Harris Road triangle. The two-way cycle route element of that is three metres wide. And that's a national standard. That's LTN 120 compliant. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that the reason is that it's not felt it's too long a route to be as narrow as it is to accommodate the users that want to use it. And rather than specify exactly what the national standard is at this stage, it'd be nice to take that away and perhaps have a, I think about what national standards should be applied where and go there with it.
Thank you, Mark.
Chair, just, just, obviously members are familiar with the, you know, with the recent thing that we have need to give planning reasons. Obviously in this respect, it's not a usual application where, you know, we, you know, we'd obviously be quite robust in this, you know, it's only a conditions application. So I think before I referred to having, you know, a reason, members may be thinking it's just that it's insufficient width. And, you know, and yeah, that could be as straightforward as that. And so I just didn't want to sort of perhaps get diverted on, you know, thinking any more widely about that. But just want to make sure, you know, why members, obviously at the moment all we've got is a lost officer recommendation. We just need to go through the process of somebody saying they want to refuse it, want to refuse it for this reason, and then seconded and then voted on that basis. So yes, just saying that normally with an application, obviously it's, you know, it's a full application and it would go through a full process. Obviously in this respect, it's a condition application. And so as you may have seen on the condition discharge applications, they are, you know, they're just generally either accepted or refused, if you like. Obviously in terms of the planning committee process, at the moment all we've got is a lost officer recommendation. And so, you know, at the moment it's sort of, you know, sat in the ether. So we just need to go through a process of, you know, proposing a reason and seconding and just go through that vote. Thank you Chair.
I've got, Brian?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that it's, it's on the grounds of it is not compliant with LTN 120 in terms of width. And so it's an unsafe footway and a cycleway.
Sorry Chair, I'm not sure what the reference was there to LTN 120 and whether that's a material consideration. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, can I, can I just? From what I've heard members say before, the concern is about the width and the inadequacy of that for safe use by all users, pedestrians, cyclists, wheelchair users, et cetera. And from a planning perspective, unless Nicky wishes to correct me, I think that's all we would need if that is members' view. Because it's, and adherence to a particular guidance is not something that we necessarily need.
If it doesn't need that level of detail, then yes. I'd like to put forward, okay, we're talking about the width.
Chair, can I just ask that the, you know, what we put in the decision, the discharge application decision notice is delegated to the officers in conjunction with the co-chairs. Thank you Chair.
Can I just draw attention to, I mean, in the first paragraph of your recommendation, Chris? I mean, clearly we've taken a different view, that we, we don't feel that the details submitted represent an acceptable alternative. So I don't know if any work could be done around that in terms of framing the reasons for not accepting the recommendation.
Chair, as I say, as long as we've got the kind of the basics, the basic reasoning, which is essentially the width and from what I'm hearing, and the, and the safety of users. Safety and attractiveness of the route for users.
And the lack of maintenance, there's nothing, there's nothing in here to say that they're gonna maintain it, is there Chris?
Chair, I think when I answered that question earlier, there is no requirement in the condition to maintain it. So I feel that that's less of a, a reason for us to resist.
My other concern is the lack of engagement from the applicants. It seems it had to be sort of, all the lifting and carrying had to be done by the, by the planning officers to get to this point.
Sorry Chair, just to, you know, remind us where we are at the moment. And I think Chris gave a bit of a short summary there of what he saw the issues that members had raised were. And I think there was some, you know, sort of agreement around the room that that captured what people had said. I say I've already put a suggestion in there that we, that the final wording, what goes on the notice is delegated to the officers in conjunction with yourselves. And therefore I just want to confirm that somebody's proposing what, you know, to refuse for those reasons that Chris outlined, somebody seconded it, and then we take the vote, I think is where we're at. Thank you Chair.
I thought we had that from Brian and from Richard. Yeah? Proposer and seconder.
Yeah, and, and also that it's quite usual that the officer shapes it up takes it back and shapes it up.
And explains why we can't discharge the condition. Yeah.
Shall we move to the vote then? Yeah, Alan? We have the new recommendation before, outlined by Victoria. So, and proposed by Brian and seconded by Richard.
Oh, we do this by hands, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, we need to go.
No, it's on. So yes, I will go with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, I support the motion. In support Chair.
I'm in favour of the proposal.
Support the motion Chair.
Support Chair.
Support Chair.
Support the motion.
Support the motion.
Yeah, for the motion Chair.
Yeah, support the motion Chair.
That is unanimous. Thank you all very much for, I know that was quite a long period of time. So I'm going to call for another comfort break. If we can be back at ten past six.
Yeah, I need to finish at seven.
All the, actually the appeals and then the date for the next meeting. I'm afraid I'm gonna be a bit more impatient on this one. She's not back in the next thirty seconds, we're gonna make a start. Okay, we've just got one, one more application and then a report and then we're just about done. So can we move to item 7C, planning application number 2302359 stroke full? And it's 88 Midwood Road, Sheffield S6 4HA. And this is on page ninety-three of your agenda. And it's back to Andrew to present the report.
Yeah, thank you Chair. So this is a property that's in the middle of Hillsborough District Centre, number eighty-eight Midwood Road. So it's a property that sits in the middle of the row of shops. It's got Hillsborough Park tram stop immediately in front of the site. And Hillsborough Park is also in very close proximity. And so just to talk about the area behind the building very quickly. So it's got a small area of green space which belongs to some apartments. It's also slightly offset from a larger service yard which belongs to B&amp;M. And so on the screen now, that's a photo of the building in question. It's a two-storey building that's got a double shop front width. It's vacant, you might detect from that photo. Most recently, there was an opticians and one side is a barber's and the other is a shop run by a esteemed local artist. This is just a photo of the rear of the building. Probably not a huge amount to glean from that, but you can just see the window arrangement. And two of those windows in a setback position on the ground floor, they would be replaced by doors which would provide the access to the two residential units. And the initial proposal was to subdivide the building into two to create two houses of multiple occupation, each with seven bedrooms. So that proposal involved the entire building. We've seen residential use on the ground floor, removing the commercial use. However, following concerns raised by officers about the impact of the proposal on the vitality and viability of the local centre and the residential use being over intensive, the proposal was amended and scaled back. So the amended proposal would see the retention of the commercial unit on the ground floor and the residential uses limited to the upper floors. The proposal is then to utilise the first and second and the roof space to create two smaller houses of multiple occupation units which would each have three bedrooms, a shared kitchen lounge room and a shared bathroom each. The changes to the elevations would be minimal. You'd just get roof lights going in on the front and rear elevations. And also there's the two new entrance doors for the residential units on the rear elevations. The office report explains that the vast majority of representations were received in relation to the original proposal. There's a hundred and seventeen objections to that from local residents. We also had objections from councillors Mallinson, Gilligan, Kubo and Notte. After the amended plans, we received a further consultation exercise when they're taken. But the response to that was significantly different. We've only two representations received in response. And but we did have councillor Mallinson maintaining his objection, seconding the view that the proposers would deliver a poor standard of residential accommodation. And the report explains that the amended plans have addressed the concerns expressed regarding the initial proposal. The retention of the ground floor is good news because it means that the unit would revert back to playing an important role in maintaining the vitality and viability of the centre. In addition, the proposed HMO use has been scaled back to something that's considered to be reasonable in proportion commensurate with the size of the building. There's no policy conflicts with that component of the proposal. Room sizes, we think are acceptable and provide acceptable amenity for residents. And the development ticks a lot of boxes for its sustainable development credentials, bringing back to, into productive use a vacant building and the higher sustainable location where the residents can benefit from access to local shops, services in Hillsborough District Centre, the park and of course the tram. So the proposals are considered acceptable to by officers following all the amendments and the recommendation is one of the proved subjects of the conditions in the report.
Thank you Andrew. Are there any questions on this one? Any comments? Oh, a question, sorry. Brian?
Yes, a couple of questions. I'll preserve the comment I was gonna make and I'll just ask the two questions. Got a bit of a concern that it's under space standards, national space standards for one of the rooms if it was to be a double. So what, if anything, can we do about this? Can this be conditioned by planning or does it come under another remit? So my second question is about the bins. So the bins, yes, we can, it can be stored at the back of the building. But where are they going to be collected from at the front? Because the front of the shop is straight onto a tram stop.
Andrew?
Yeah, in terms of the national space standards, I mean, it's not explicit that they apply to HMOs anyway. I mean, we've carried out some benchmarking against national space standards, the ones which are in use for private sector licensing for HMOs and also the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide. The vast majority of the rooms are all in excess of that. I think we have to be mindful as well that it's a conversion, not new build. And it's only because one of the, this particular room that's slightly below is showing us having a double bed in it. And that we don't know if it's gonna be occupied by two people. Just because it's got a double bed, it could easily be just one person in there. So I think just looking at everything in the round, I think because it got, because the rooms are quite spacious for all the other bedrooms and for all the shared rooms. And we don't know whether it, for definite, whether it'll have two people in that room in question. It's not new build, so, you know, I think there has to be an element of pragmatism, looking at everything around. And so, yeah, we take the view that it's acceptable regards to internal space standards. In terms of the bin question, yeah, that's, I mean, we can see some there on that particular photo. So the property already has them. It's got that alleyway where they can be brought out onto the front and collected. And I think there is a little, do you remember the service lay-by where the bus pulled in yesterday for when the members sighted its way? That would seem to me the most logical place for the bins to be brought to in order to be collected and allow the, you know, cause minimal obstruction to have the public footpath or the road itself. Because, yeah, clearly it's, hopefully no one would think of putting it out on the tram tracks in order to be, to be collected. I don't know if you've got anything else to say about that, Mark?
Okay, shall we move on then to?
It's just, I mean, obviously there's commercial waste as well that will come from the shops. So there has to be a solution to that. And I wanted to flag that up here, that there ought to be a proper solution.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously it has been commercial in the past as well. I think there's been suggestions, it's also been used as residential. So I suppose it's not brand new for my development. Hopefully whatever arrangements were in place previously will come full circle and be used, used again. But yeah, I think it seems to me that you have got in close proximity that service lay-by which hopefully provides a solution.
Thank you. Mary Ann? And then I've got Richard afterwards.
It's fine actually. My question's been answered. Thanks.
Richard?
Thank you Chair, I'll be quick. Is there a requirement to provide amenity space for residents in properties? And if so, where is it?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a few things at play. I mean, we're very close to Hillsborough Park, which that means that you can be a bit more flexible in a situation like this. I think the other thing to bear in mind as well is that you have got permitted development rights. So you can create two flats above a shop. You don't even need planning permission to do that. And actually it's interchangeable as well from if they wanted to have this as a HMO or change it to a flat. Again, they can do that without even needing planning permission. So, yeah, I recognise there's not gonna be any external amenity space that's particularly usable for these residents within Kurtledge. And that's, that's regrettable. But I think that there is a lot of other positive credentials about living in this location, what we've spoken about, just given how connected it is. And I think the park would be the main external amenity space. It's so close. It's, in other locations, it might be more problematic to not have external amenity space. But I think here, for want of a better phrase, it's kind of bailed out by its close association with Hillsborough Park.
Thank you for that. If there are no more questions, we'll go to comments. Brian?
I think this is excellent and it's been altered from what was two very large HMOs. And also that officers and the developer have preserved the commercial space as well. I think that's right for that frontage onto Midwood Road. So I should be voting for this application.
Okay, if there are no more comments, can we move to a vote please?
For the office's recommendation Chair.
Thank you Alan.
For the office's recommendation Chair. For Chair.
For the recommendation Chair.
For the recommendations Chair.
For the recommendation Chair.
For Chair.
For.
For the office's recommendation Chair.
For Chair. Yeah, for Chair.
Yeah, for, Chair.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Thank you for getting through that. So quickly, that just takes us on to the report. Record of planning appeals and submissions and decisions, and that is for noting, but has anyone got anything they wanted to pick out of this and comment on? We are on page 106. Well, 105 is the opening sheet, and then you go into the detail on 106, which I'm sure most members will have read by now. Okay, can we agree to note the report, please? Yeah? Okay. Are you all happy to come back on Tuesday, the 12th of November? Wish we the date of the next meeting, and there'll be, there'll be site visits the day before, on Monday, the 11th of November. Thank you all very much for persevering with this to the, to the end. Thank you.